Call the meeting in order, please rise for the pledge.
Pledge of leis to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, an individual for liberty and justice for all.
Hi, good evening, everyone, welcome to the July 29th Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Let's start with roll call.
Carrie?
Here.
Kimball?
Present.
Stephenson?
Here.
Wilhelm?
Here.
Schreiber?
Here.
Any ceremonies, announcements, appointments, or presentations tonight?
There's none.
Any declarations of conflict, ex parte contacts, or site visits?
I had somebody a couple of weeks ago come to my house and they were talking about the Spokane Street and Grange area, I don't even know which property, and some vote coming up. He was really nice, I told him he had to come to the planning and zoning to handle that, but he wasn't aggressive or anything, just wanted to say his piece. He did say I was the only commissioner that knew what they were doing, everybody else might take note of that.
That's hearsay. Right.
That's it.
With regards to our second public hearing, the G2, I'm the engineer for the Ross Point Water District, and so I want to disclose that we've had, I've had some conversations with regards, with the applicant with regards to water main size in Horse Haven, and so that's supposed to be, to let everyone know, it'll be a 12-inch water main, and so, but of course, that doesn't really change the outcome of anything here tonight, so just wanted to disclose that so everybody knew what I've heard, and no.
Okay, thank you. All right, consent calendar.
There is nothing on it.
There is nothing on it, all right. Citizen issues, this section of the agenda is reserved for citizens wishing to address the commission on an item that is not on the agenda tonight, persons wishing to speak will have five minutes. If I have anything they want to talk about tonight that's not on the agenda. All right, seeing none, move right along to unfinished or old business.
We had nothing on there as well.
All right. Okay, jump right into public hearings tonight, if you do want to do some public testimony for any one of these hearings, make sure you fill out the paperwork in the back, bring that up front to Nancy up here, and we'll work through this, and you'll have four minutes of that time, I'll explain how that'll work once we get to that point. First hearing tonight is River City Corner Special Use Permit and Subdivision, and we'll open up that hearing.
Good evening, Planning Commission, my name is Justin Sauter, and tonight before us we have River City Corners, which is an application for a special use permit and a subdivision as well. The applicant is requesting approval to subdivide approximately 4.06 acres into five commercial lots within the limited commercial zone and a special use permit to develop a convenience store with fuel pumps on one of the proposed parcels. Here is the project site in red on the northeast corner of Polan Avenue and Greens Ferry Road. The project site is mainly surrounded by residential development to the north, west, and east with an elementary school directly to the south. The current land use on site is a large lot, single-family residence, and some associated Here is the zoning of the subject site, you can see it's limited commercial as well as the surrounding parcels, which are mainly R1 residential. And first, we will talk about the subdivision plan, so here you can see there are five different lots proposed outlined in yellow, there is one entrance and exit to the project site on Polan Avenue, and there will be another one on Greens Ferry. Lot three contains the existing single-family residence, and lot three is also where the convenience store and fuel pumps will be proposed, and we'll get into those a little later. So we will go over the review criteria for the subdivision first. Criteria one is definite provisions have been made for water supply system that is adequate in terms of quantity and quality for the type of subdivision proposed. Ross Point Water District has provided a will-serve letter indicating that there is sufficient capacity and intent to serve the proposed subdivision. For criteria two, adequate provisions have been made for public sewage systems and that the existing municipal system can accommodate the proposed sewer flows, the city has adequate capacity to provide service to the subdivision as proposed, and the conceptual layout of the sewer system shows the ability to be served. Number three, the proposed streets are consistent with the transportation element of the comprehensive plan, the proposed layout of the subdivision is consistent with the transportation master plan, each parcel will be responsible for maintenance of landscaping and irrigation as well as snow removal from public rights of way adjoining the project site, and there will also be a relocation of traffic signal on the northeast corner of Greens Ferry and Polan that will be coordinated with the developer and the city through the site plan review All areas of the proposed subdivision which may involve soil or topographical conditions presenting hazards have been identified, and that the proposed uses of these areas are compatible with such conditions. There are no known soil or topographic conditions which have been identified as presenting hazards, there are onsite septic systems that will be removed upon development, and the Phillips 66 pipeline does run through the proposed subdivision, and there will be a 50-foot easement proposed over the pipeline that would be maintained as open space, and we will take a look at this in closer detail on a future slide. The area proposed for subdivision is zoned for the proposed use, and the use conforms to other requirements found in the code, the subdivision and the proposed lots conform to the requirements of Title 17 and 18 of the Post Falls Municipal Code. In addition, the proposed convenience store with fuel pumps is an allowed use with the approval of a special use permit, so if the special use permit is approved, the proposed subdivision would be consistent and conforming with the limited commercial zone and the proposed use. And finally, for criteria six, impact fees will be assessed and collected on individual building permit basis to assist in mitigating offsite impacts to parks, public safety, streets, multimodal EMS, and fire systems, services. Here again is the subdivision, and again, I just wanted to point out lot three because that is where we are going to be focusing on for the special use permit. Here is the proposed conceptual plan for the special use permit, you can see that the main building for the convenience store is toward the east, and the fuel island and fuel tanks are in the center of the site, and further west, the fuel tanks are underground You can also see here the entrance and exit on Polan Avenue, and then lot three will also be accessible off of Greens Ferry Road when the full subdivision gets built out. Now we will go over the review criteria for the special use permit. For number one, implementation of the special use will or will not conform to the purposes of the applicable zoning districts, the limited commercial zone permits neighborhood-compatible commercial resources services and uses of modest scale in areas not conveniently served by existing or proposed commercially designated land. A convenience store is an outright permitted use within the LC zone, but the proposal of fuel pumps requires the approval of the special use permit. The proposed use may provide some daily needs to the surrounding residential subdivisions, and both Greens Ferry and Polan are minor arterials which can accommodate the anticipated traffic volumes associated with the gas station and convenience store. For number two, we touched on this briefly already, that a convenience store is allowed use by right in the limited commercial zone, however, a convenience store with fuel pumps is an allowable use with the approval of a special use permit, and that's what you can see here in the chart from the municipal code. For review criteria number three, the convenience store will be required to comply with the Department of Environmental Quality, Cootney County Fire and Rescue, and the site plan review process to mitigate risk associated with the sale and storage of petroleum products, and through the site plan review process, a buffer will be required between the commercial use and the surrounding residential use to help reduce potential nuisances such as noise, light, and odor through setbacks and landscaping. Continuing on, criteria three, we'll talk about transportation, the city's transportation capital improvement plan, or sorry, the proposed special use is not anticipated to produce impacts that would adversely impact adjoining transportation systems, the current roadway network has capacity in immediate vicinity to facilitate long-term traffic operations with the improvements that are proposed or required as part of the site development, and the proposed project will require roadway widening and the relocation of traffic signals at the intersection of Polan and Greens Ferry. For water, the site will be connected to the city's water reclamation facilities which have capacity to handle the project, existing septic systems on site will be decommissioned and appropriate sewer fees and connections would be identified and completed in the site plan review process, and the city sewer system has capacity to serve the convenience store and gas station. For water, as mentioned previously, Ross Point has submitted a will-serve letter, and there are existing facilities in both Polan and Greens Ferry. For criteria four, whether the proposed use will or will not comply with the goals and policies found within the comprehensive plan, so now we'll go over some of those goals and policies. For goal one, business development at this location capitalizes on access to neighborhood commercial opportunities and may provide opportunities for employment and services in proximity to residential uses, which may be seen as providing community prosperity and fiscal health. For goal three, identifies lower-scale walkable small lot development as being tied to Post Falls' small-town scale and feel, and the proximity of small-scale commercial services in proximity to residential zones promotes walkability in this area and may contribute to the overall small-town feel. For goal six, the development of this parcel would be considered as infill development and would bring the adjacent multimodal transportation infrastructure up to current standards, including in street improvements, bike lanes, and pedestrian pathways. The missing improvements are a priority need for access to the school to the south side of Polan, and we'll get into this more as well with some photos on a future slide. For goal 12, the development of the property will contribute to the city's public infrastructure improvements through payment of impact fees, and in addition, business development contributes to overall fiscal resiliency within the community through sales tax and job creation. Now for some of the policies, support land use patterns, impact fees will help maintain or enhance community levels of service, and the proposed business development contributes to fiscal resiliency. As cars are the dominant mode of transportation within the community, petroleum products are a needed resource. In addition, convenience stores may provide a number of food and household products that can be seen as a valuable resource in the immediate vicinity. There are no other gas stations or grocery stores within three-quarter mile of the project site. Also, the completion of missing segments of pedestrian and vehicular facilities will aid with maintaining and enhancing the level of service for transportation in this area. In order to ensure that the development will be well-designed, the project is subject to the city's site plan review process and required to conform with both city and state standards, and through that process, we can also help ensure the gas station will remain a compatible use with the surrounding residential areas by implementing design standards such as buffers and setbacks from the commercial uses. Here we have a graphic that shows the project site in the middle of this red circle, and the circle is approximately one mile, and this is just representing where other facilities that might be similar to this are within the area. So to the east at the intersection of Polan and Highway 41, there is a Conoco, a 7-Eleven, which are both gas stations, and a grocery outlet, and they're just about one mile away. The next closest facility would be located at Walmart, further south on Mullin Ave, and as you can see, it's just outside of the one-mile radius. This graphic can also help illustrate how the development could be perceived to fall in line with the small-town feel of Post Falls, rather than residents driving out to Highway 41 for small convenience items, there is potential to walk within a neighborhood to find some basic amenities. Policy three, five, and eight, we have the convenience store and gas station may provide daily needs within close proximity to the neighboring residential subdivisions, and the site is near the intersection of Polan and Greens Ferry, which are both arterial roads, minor arterials, and the subject site is an underutilized property and can be considered as infill development. Policy 25, 26, and 27 are all very related in talking about improving the continuity of sidewalks and improving the overall connectivity of transportation and pedestrian pathways, and so development of this property will include improvements such as a 10-foot multi-use trail along Polan and a 6-foot sidewalk along Greens Ferry and bike lane as well. Here is a overview of the project site, and here I just wanted to show that there are sidewalks on both Greens Ferry and Polan represented with the orange or yellowish line, and then they stop at the subject site. With this project being built out, sidewalk would be continued represented by the red dash line all the way along the project site, and now you would have all four corners being improved, and people be able to walk, you know, from the east on Greens Ferry all the way to the corner, and then south on Polan, or on the same for Greens Ferry, just coming down south on Polan. Here's another photo kind of showing that, here we're on Greens Ferry looking north, the project site is on the northeast corner, and hopefully you can kind of see that three of the four corners are improved with site improvements, and with this project, that fourth corner would be improved as well. Here's a couple more, on the left, we have Greens Ferry looking south towards the project site, and if you can see, there's sidewalk at the base of this white fence that then dead ends to the project site, this would be continued all the way down to the intersection, and then same on the right photo here, we have this trail that is dead-ending into the project site, and this is looking on Polan west towards the intersection. Policy 43 talks about compliance with accessibility requirements in accordance with the American with the Disabilities Act, so development of the property would include improvements to the pedestrian paths as we've just talked about in compliance with ADA, and then through the site plan review process, all the onsite improvements would be in compliance with ADA standards as well. 67, promote linking green belts, trails, and open spaces, we've also kind of talked to this one, but the multi-use trail included on Polan will connect pathways from the site, from the subject site to the neighborhood as well as the sidewalk on Greens Ferry. Here is a list of all the agencies that were notified of the project, and out of those agencies, we received six responses, the school district remains neutral, Cootney County Fire and Rescue will review the project during permitting or the site plan review process, Cootney County Community Development did not have any comments, Post Falls Police Department remains neutral, the Yellowstone Pipeline does have vicinity, facilities within the project site, which we will talk about, and then for Department of Environmental Quality, they have specific requirements for underground storage tanks, and in their comments, they wanted to put emphasis on the importance of following best management practices for petroleum products over the aquifer. Here we have the pipeline represented with a red line, as you can see, it follows Polan and then jogs out onto the project site through the neighboring subdivision to the east, and then eventually makes its way back down onto Polan. And here's the subdivision, so this green area in the middle of the site that runs diagonally is actually where the easement over the pipeline is proposed, and this is a 50-foot easement, so 25 feet on either side of the pipeline, and this would be, this would remain as open space. And then again, just to show where the pipeline is, here is the conceptual site plan for the convenience store, and you can see that the pipeline is, or the fuel island and the fuel tanks are well out of the way of where the easement for the pipeline is currently. Here's the subdivision review criteria, so we can just have a reference to review them, and the special use permit review criteria, and then the last thing I wanted to mention is that upon granting a special use, the commission may attach conditions including, but not limited to, the following here on screen. So that concludes my presentation, I'm available for questions if you have any.
Any questions?
Do have a quick one, can you go back to the site plan, please?
Here.
There you go. I see in the green there that the, on the, it looks like the east side, there's some buffering, it looks like that green area, it looks like it's about 20 feet, can you speak to what kind of buffering and landscaping is required to go in that area?
Sure, the requirement is 15 feet, and then they have trees and shrubs that are required at certain intervals, I don't know what all of those intervals are offhand, but the buffer itself is a minimum of 15 feet, what they're actually depicting here is 15 feet, so then you can see the building is even set back a little further from the 15-foot buffer.
Okay, and the purpose of that is, just so I understand it, is to screen adjoining properties from?
It's a separation of uses specifically between a residential, single-family residential and commercial uses.
So it's a landscape screen, basically?
Yeah.
Okay.
What's your distance from the back of the convenience store to the properties in the back?
I do not know that offhand.
And so, and this just would be landscape?
Correct.
Screening also?
On the east side?
On the...
North?
North side.
Where the pipeline is?
Yeah, but there's properties beyond that, residential use properties.
North of lot four.
North of lot four, yeah.
Yeah.
I can go back to that as well, yeah, there's landscaping, that 15-foot buffer would be all the way around the project site on the north and east from the resident, single-family residences to the north and the east.
Thank you.
Am I correct in that Phillips 66 and YPL are the same line?
That's my understanding correct, yes.
Okay, so they're talking about setting back from that, okay. And then the pedestrian path that comes along Polan, right now dead ends into that well that's right there, it's not on this property, but it's right at that corner, it's shown on the site plan? What's the thought process on how to connect the sidewalk on this site and that existing sidewalk without going through the well?
Where is the?
Is that a question for the developer?
It might be.
Rob Paulus might be able to answer that.
Okay. When you were looking at that one picture, looking down Polan, you see the wellhead and the fence that surrounds that well.
That's right on the corner.
This is what we're talking about? Yep, see the red and white fence there?
Yeah.
Good evening, members of the commission, Robert Paulus, city engineer. So we did take a look at that with the developer during the preliminary application process, that well that's there ideally, we would like to see it go away, but there is still users of that well to the north. There is room, and the lower right pic, actually, the lower right picture does not depict it well enough, but there is room that in what would typically be the swale area that the sidewalk or multi-use path in this case can wrap around and not get into the roadway and be between the curb and the fence to connect the two, which would allow for the connectivity.
But since that's not on this property, whose responsibility would that be?
They would be responsible for making that connection in front of the well, well site.
Okay. Conditions, recommended conditions, so I hear a couple of questions on the staff report, if I can get back to it. Just a second, takes me a minute. Just trying to understand some of these, there are seven conditions that were suggested. Condition number three is the proposed subdivision must be completed in a single phase, does that mean that all of the site work is done, or how does that, what does that translate to?
That would require for the subdivision, all of the frontage improvements would need to be completed.
So just frontage improvements, not necessarily the internal road?
The internal access point would be a requirement with the actual site plan review of the proposed convenience store with gas station, but that's not a subdivision requirement.
Okay. And then number seven was landscaping plans, so the landscaping plans, street trees, street trees should be planted by developer in spring, fall, following construction of homes, I'm assuming that means following construction of buildings, not necessarily houses.
But, yes, with each?
But would they, are they going to be required to put in these, the landscape buffers, the landscaping itself along the street and around the perimeter of the property before they sell those individual lots, or is it just when actually somebody comes forward and is developing that lot?
I will let Planning answer that site plan related question.
So typically with a subdivision, commercial subdivisions, they generally form a property owners association to maintain street trees that are on the public right-of-way. This right here would be generally, I don't know how this is prior to plat, how it's currently foreseen to be managed, either is it going to be done lot by lot or through a property owners association, that has not been relayed to me in planning yet.
Okay.
What's it, no, it's talking about the street trees.
Well, all the improvements.
Street trees, street trees shall be planted by the developer in the spring and fall following conditions, so in speaking to street trees, they are done either two ways, they are either done through a property owners association, or they're done by the adjacent property and connected to each property developed as part of the site plan review. And I'm just admitting right now, I do not know the preference nor been informed on how that plan is to be done.
Okay.
Maybe the applicant should shed, could shed a light on that aspect.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, my understanding right then, the developer's only going to develop the gas station piece, the other three pieces aren't going to be developed and possibly be sold or something, is that what I'm understanding?
If currently, right now, you are getting a special use permit just for lot three for that particular use, you're also being requested to create five lots, one of the lots, lot three, is the one with the special use permit, the other four remaining lots will be available to market and develop consistent with all the permitted uses that are allowed in the limited commercial zone.
For them to develop and/or sell?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Can you remind me how this lot became limited commercial, the history of it?
There was an annexation in 2018, and it became limited commercial at that time.
And why, I'm trying to remember, why was R1 not considered, considering R1's everywhere else?
From what I recollect, right now, he's looking at the future land use map to see if there's a commercial note, I don't believe there is on that, but when you look at the right-of-way that goes through that, the easement that encumbers the property with the gas line, at the time of annexation, they looked at different viable uses with residential around that, with the right-of-way that'd be dedicated for the, that there, at the time of annexation, didn't seem like a good viable option for them to put a residential project, plus the time, we didn't necessarily have the cottage home, the tiny home, and the other options at the time for annexation that are now available for annexation requests, but this did, like Justin said, limited commercial was proposed in 2018, and that's how it was brought in then.
I think if I remember right, it was one of the arguments that they had for, that was one, that the angle of the pipeline going through the property made it pretty much impossible to develop a single family, so it was either going to be multifamily or some sort of a limited commercial.
Yeah.
And they even spoke to the fact that there'd be a spot for a convenience store would be a nice spot for being close to the high school and whatnot like that, so that was, that was part of their sales pitch.
True, and then in 2018, we could do multifamily and limited commercial, that was an option, since 2018, we did remove multifamily as an option, so.
I have a question, how many kids go to that great school?
It is a great question, I do not know.
Should be.
Answer. Might be in the comments from the school district.
Yeah, it'll be in there, it'll be last year's numbers, but it should stay.
Sorry, what was that?
Three.
350.
350.
350.
And how many high school?
High school, 1,600.
We've got 2,000 kids there and 1,600 of them got cars.
Okay, I don't think that many.
Well, however, 800 then.
Fair.
Okay.
Any other questions? All righty, thank you. Bring up the applicant now? Name for the record, please.
Hi, I'm Nick Ebner with Ace Solutions. This is Kevin Stoops, also with Ace Solutions. Let's see here.
What's that?
Do you know where mine would be? Right with me, just in case.
May have to load that.
Yeah. All right. So again, yeah, I am Nick Ebner. We're here with Ace Solutions on behalf of the owner, Tony Marman. River City Corners, as was, as was mentioned, is a 4.06 acre lot at this intersection of Pole Line and Greens Ferry. Currently, it's within the city of Post Falls, zone limited commercial. We're proposing five lots, an average of .81 acres per lot. For utilities, as mentioned, there's existing city of Post Falls sewer lines within both Greens Ferry and Pole Line. Those yellow lines on there represent rough location of those sewer lines. And the brown is the water lines from Ross Point. There's a 12-inch water line at Greens Ferry and a 6-inch through Pole Line. And then, as mentioned also, we have the Phillips 66 gas line that runs through the site that ends up forming a lot of our future lot lines. Here's our rough, here's our layout that we have so far. We've got, like I said, five lots. Our smallest lot is Lot 1 there. It's about 13, 250 square feet, which is just under a third of an acre. Our largest is Lot 3, 57, 500, give or take, and 1.3 acres. As part of our development, we'll be widening at both Pole Line and Greens Ferry. And then we'll be installing a 10-foot path extension on Pole Line. Currently, the, as Mr. Paulus mentioned, the idea is that we will go around the well at the Poor Boys Water Association. We have been in some contact with them and we have found out, as Mr. Paulus mentioned, that they are still using that well. And, yeah, we'll be doing a 5-foot sidewalk along Greens Ferry, connecting the existing and providing that last connection at that intersection. The lots bordering the residential have a required 15-foot separation, as mentioned. And currently also, they are also required to have a berm or fence as part of that visual separation. So not only do they have to have trees, but they need to have a, some sort of vertical separation with a fence or berm or combination.
So would that berm or fence be, not be the existing fences there, but a new one?
I believe the existing one is a chain link fence, so, no.
Side obscuring.
It would need to have side obscuring, so either, they would need to provide slats and that or, or probably, you know, with all the site work to be done, it probably will need to be taken out and put back in with something more side obscuring anyway, so. And then, yeah, as mentioned, the, the special use is going to be occurring currently on Lot 3. The, the reason it is special use is as, as, as mentioned, is because it has gasoline. It's be a convenience store with gas, gas station. We have done, had some initial discussions with the city in terms of safety, in terms of having the fuel being, being where it's located. There's, we cannot find any local requirements from either DEQ or Cooten County Fire and Rescue in terms of how far it can be from a school. We, we were able to locate a EPA recommendation. It is of 1,000 feet for, for gas stations that are planning to dispense more than 3.6 million gallons of gas. Now, I did a little bit of research. The average gas station only sells 1.1 million gallons of gas. And this gas station's going to have four islands with maybe eight spots. I do not know what they're anticipating for gas sales, but I would imagine it's going to be hard for them to, to get 3.6 million or more. It sounds like a very large station would be needed to do that. Yeah. And I think that is all that I have for now. Are there any questions?
Questions? In regards to the Phillips 66 letter that's in our packet, what conversations have you had with us? Because this says it may conflict with your proposed plan.
Yeah, we've had numerous conversations with them already. We think what happened is that this email got sent to a different department within Phillips 66, but we've had, we've had lots of conversations with them in terms of both the location of where we can build a building, which they're happy with, and also with where the crossing is. Because at our last, let's see if I can go back to it. We've got the road that will cross over the, the line up here in the, the north side of Lot 3. They have some requirements in terms of the casing, either the casing of the line. We've already done some initial pothole and determined how deep it is. And we've kind of come up with a, with an initial design of how we're going to cross that line. And they're, so far, they're happy with everything, so.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Thank you. All right. Do public testimony now. If you haven't and you still want to speak, make sure you fill out paperwork. Bring it up front to Nancy here. So the way this will work is everybody will get four minutes to speak if they like, or I'll read their comments. There is, it's not a Q and A. If you have specific questions for the developer, the developer does have a certain amount of time after public testimony to answer those questions. So if you have questions, ask them. They will answer them shortly after all the public testimony. There is no back and forth during this. We just allow everyone to, to speak their mind. You'll have four minutes. Mr. Manley, how is this clock working now? John, how's this clock working now? Obviously, I see something back there. Is there something down here or?
No, Nancy's running the clock from over there and then?
They should see it on the, on their laptop too, correct?
Oh, there's going to be a clock on the laptop?
There should be one.
There's a timer on my iPad.
There's a timer on the iPad?
Yeah.
On the podium? Okay. It's all new. We had a clock last week, but, okay.
It's right here.
Cool. And then Nancy's running that.
And now it's upside down. There we go.
Cool. All right, cool. So the timer will be right in front of you, so you'll know how much time you have left. If I, if you do run over and I do interrupt you, it's just to let you know your time's up, so. With that being said, we'll go into public comments here. Not wishing to speak in opposition, Megan Frederick. See attached letter. I do not see an attached letter. Where is this? So these are all together? Okay, so it's? Okay. Chase, okay. Last name thrown me off. All right. "To whom it may concern," I'm going to read this into the record here. "I'm writing to express my deep concern and strong opposition to the proposed commercial development at the four-acre lot less than 500 feet from my house. I understand the current plan is to divide it into parcels into five commercial lots, including construction of a gas station. I urge you to reconsider this proposal due to the significant and lasting negative impacts it would have on our neighborhood, our property values, and safety and well-being of nearby families and children. Devaluation of property and quality of life. Our neighborhood is quiet residential area characterized by family homes, green space, and peaceful atmosphere. Introducing a high-traffic commercial business, especially a gas station, will erode this character. Numerous studies have shown that homes located near gas stations experience a drop in property value, sometimes to the amount of 5 to 15. The increased noise, traffic, light, and air pollution will also, will make our area less desirable for families and future buyers, directly harming the investment we made in our homes. Safety concerns, gas station near an oil pipeline. The presence of an underground oil pipeline on or near the proposed development site raises serious safety concerns. Construction of a gas station is inherently hazardous facility involving fuel storage tanks and constant refueling activity. So close to a pressurized oil pipeline significantly increases the risk of fire explosion and environmental contamination. Even a minor incident could have catastrophic consequences, not just for those in the, at the station, but for the homes in the vicinity. Environmental and health risk. Gas stations introduce a variety of pollutants into the local environment, including volatile organic compounds from fuel vapors, potential leaks from underground storage tanks, and contaminated stormwater runoff. These pollutants can affect the local air and water quality, especially troubling given the proximity to residential homes, children, pets, and sensitive individuals. Long-term exposure to these VOCs has been linked to respiratory issues and serious health concerns. Increased traffic and noise. The influx of vehicles associated with multiple commercial lots, especially a gas station, will dramatically, drastically increase the traffic volume of nearby roads not designed to accommodate commercial traffic. This raises the potential for accidents endangering pedestrians and disrupts the quiet and safe streets of our family that our families currently enjoy. Proximity to schools proposes additional risks. The proposed development is dangerously close to a high school and elementary school, which raises many, many red flags, including traffic. Near-school zones puts young pedestrians and student drivers at greater risk, potentially, particularly during high-traffic drop-off and pickup hours. In addition, the presence of gas stations so close to the school introduces exposure to harmful air pollutants for children. Those developing lungs are especially vulnerable. It's not only health resist, help, health risk, but a public safety oversight. There's tobacco and alcohol sold at gas stations so close to a school. Mismatch with zoning and community vision. This type of high-impact commercial development is incompatible with the surrounding residential areas and long-term vision of the community has appalled. It threatens to set a precedent for the future encroachment of commercial area, commercial uses in the residential areas and further degrading the community fabric. In summary, allowing this development to proceed would irreversibly damage and the value, safety, livability of our neighborhood. I strongly urge you to prioritize the well-being of families and friends who built their lives here to reject the proposed commercial.
Did you get the second name on there?
The second name?
Or the second?
Yes. That was Megan Frederick and Chase Setzler. Thank you. All right, wishing to speak in opposition, Mary Jo McNally. It says, "See attachment."
I'll give it to you when I'm done. I'm going to read it and then I'll hand it to you. Is that okay?
Cool, I'd like it. Somebody else could read. That's great.
My name is Mary Jo McNally and I live in Post Falls. Thank you for this opportunity to speak with you today. I would like to address the proposed gas station and convenience store on the northeast corner of Pole Line and Greens Ferry called River City Corners. My initial reaction to reading this was, why would they want to put a gas station right across the street from an elementary school? I am concerned about the public safety of, for the children who attend that school. Gas stations are fire hazards and explosion hazards, not to mention magnets for robberies and other criminal activities. I just think it's a very bad idea to put one on that corner with children in such close proximity. This is a residential area. I'll live a half a mile from there as the crow flies. It is a busy enough intersection already, and that's before you are allowing an additional 700 housing units just a half a mile to the north. That, that intersection is a dangerous intersection as it is. There are a myriad of gas stations just over, over on Highway 41. And I will make a comment that he said that it was Walmart and the one on the corner and then the 7-Eleven. There's also a new one going in on Hope and 41, a huge one going in there. So we have plenty of gas stations. And I see absolutely no reason for putting one smack dab in the middle of a residential area and so close to three different schools. Because there's the high school, the elementary school, and then just down the street, there's that other elementary school. I don't care that it is a limited commercial zone. That can be changed. I see you plan to divide it into five commercial lots. I think the city needs to rezone it, it residential, and leave the commercial properties over onto Highway 41. Please do not let this corner, allow this corner to become a gas station and convenience store. And who else knows what might go on the remaining lots? Thank you again for your time.
All right, thank you. Thanks. All right, wishing to speak in opposition, Dustin Anderson.
My name's Dustin Anderson. First question I have is, is there any way for us as a community to veto the SUP for the gas station?
Well, I mean, that's what?
That's what this all is. Okay, so, what, what, my big question is, what can we do as a community to help you guys understand that this is a bad idea?
What you're doing right now.
Okay, well, this isn't enough people. Do you need more signatures? Do you need more people to hear from to, to know that this is a, a problem? Because this is a surprise for everybody when we got it in the mail, so. Do you need more? Because I, there's a lot of families that are willing to do what it takes to let you guys understand this is a bad decision.
Ma'am, no, okay, I, no.
It's posted. The property's been posted with?
Yeah, all the notices.
Is that, can you answer?
Okay, this is, it's not a question and answer. It is posted, it's on the website. There, that sign's been up there. And I know people, and this has always come up. So if you have specific questions, you know, tonight's the night for the hearing. We'll see what happens tonight. Goes forward, goes backwards, I don't know. You can ask specific questions if you, and we can't really go, have this back and forth because we could go back and forth all night long.
Okay, so this?
If you have questions for the developer, ask those. They can answer in the rebuttal period. But we're not going to have this back and forth and please, no questions from the audience.
Okay, so I asked the developer that question then? Is that what you're saying? So, because that was, that was my question?
I mean, the, the hearing is tonight, so.
This is the only possibility for anybody to speak up?
It depends on what happens tonight.
Okay. Um, so on, on that behalf, I strongly would urge you- Okay, so on that behalf, I strongly would urge you guys to please, like it was said, it's already a busy intersection. It gets crazy around that area. There's tons of kids, tons of people there. Who cares about it being a small-town vibe? That's why we moved here, that's why we live here. It doesn't have to bring, you don't have to bring the city life to the middle of a residential area for us to feel some type of way, especially a gas station, that's not gonna do it. And the commercial lots are one thing, it's gonna be looking right down into our property. It's gonna decrease our property value a lot, and to be honest with you, it'd be awesome if you guys can really look at this and think to yourselves, is this really a good idea? When there's gas stations literally right down the street, they just built new ones. We don't need any more in that area. So that's all I have to say. Please reconsider it.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, wishing to speak neutral, Byron Stark. Is I say that right? Brian Stark?
Do I just tap something for the time on this, or...
I think she's got somehow a remote control.
Okay, I just wanted to say thank you for letting me speak first and foremost. I just had a couple of questions. I know this isn't really Q and A, but just for the developer and kind of the history of, you know, that area, I'm pretty sure that anyone here could, you know, go on Google and look and see the amount of traffic fatalities that happened right along Greens Ferry. I mean, last year we had, what was it? An eight-year-old kid got hit right outside the school zone by someone that wasn't paying attention. Couple years back, a 15-year-old with a bike, and then a 10-year-old girl, and then 2016, there was another incident. So my big question for the developer in that regards is what is gonna be done mitigation-wise? Because a commercial area right next to a high-traffic school zone is, in my opinion, never really like a good idea, except if there's mitigation there, if there's some sort of plan to allocate for that. So I'm just wondering, like, planning-wise, what's being done to offset the safety concerns? I'm sure that everyone is wondering about here. And kind of just like, in general, again, with that history of, you know, traffic fatalities, you can look up article after article after article, and, you know, is there, is this a safety zone, like, is a school zone gonna be increased? Or is there gonna be some sort of officer stationed by to make sure the kids are getting out of school safe, you know? So what is being done mitigation-wise to alleviate, you know, concerned parents, concerned citizens, people who live in that area and who have lost people, who have died in that area, to people who are, again, going over the speed limit, not paying attention, and, right, having a commercial area, which is gonna be a high-traffic area. It's less about, to me, about the, you know, gas hazard and fire hazard, and more about the proximity of it being right next to an educational facility. I mean, you had issues with the elementary school, the previous elementary school, that's where those young kids passed away, but you also got injured. And then you also have the high school that's right next door as well, and then you have the Real Life Church a couple blocks down, which is a 40,000-member congregation over there. It's a very big institution. So there's a lot of children, a lot of teenagers, a lot of middle schoolers, kind of all running around there, so my big concern for that development is the proximity of the residential area right next to a commercial area, what's gonna be done to alleviate that, so...
Thank you. Alright, not wishing to speak in opposition... I'm gonna butcher this first name. Merkei Christensen? Thank you. "There are concerns of increased traffic throughout the neighborhood, concerns being three schools in the area and again resulting in heavy traffic. Another concern being my back fence faces Zone 3 with crime increasing. This is to worry some. Two years ago, I spoke with Mr. Wilhelm about adding a walkway sidewalk to the east side of Green, he said not a chance. Please say not a chance here." Thank you.
What did I say?
Some, they spoke with you two years ago about adding a walkway and sidewalk on the east side of Greens Ferry, and you said not a chance. Wishing to speak in opposition, Angel Holman?
Hi. I actually came here for a different play, for a different thing, so I'm actually really surprised about this one, which is terrifying, quite honestly. And by the way, there's not three schools, there's four schools right there. So there's a STEM school that's in the Tullamore District right there. I don't know if anybody remembers that one. But, so there's the high school, there's the elementary school that my grandchildren who live with me go to, right across the street from where they're planning on putting it, and then there's one just down the street. So that's four schools, not three. And it's, honestly, that's terrifying. There's, when you say not a chance, like, that's literally the thing that I'm saying in my head, like, not a chance, do I want that there at all? Like, whoever wrote the first letter, bravo, and everybody else who spoke against it, yes, bravo, but that first letter, 100%, every single thing. And, but yes, the safety of those kids and walking is terrifying to have a convenience store and a gas station right there. Property values, all of that, yes, but for the kids' safety, no, I do not want that there. No, my neighbors do not want that. I'm like texting my neighbors at the same time, like, oh my gosh, I wish you guys were all off work right now. Because this is not something that we want at all. So please, no. And when he said something about 1,000 feet is what the recommendation is, what is it, 100 foot across the street from an elementary school? And then maybe 1,000 foot from the other elementary? Come on, you guys, no. We don't need a gas station there, we don't need it, we really don't even need a convenience store there. I'd rather have a house there than I would a convenience store and a gas station by all means. Like, we can all go a mile, and there's two of them right there, and there's a gas station right there, gas station right there, convenience store, convenience store, and another store. That's all within one mile. And all on a highway. We don't need it in the middle of our street right there. So, thank you.
Thank you. Alright, invite the applicant back up.
Hello, I'd just like to respond to a few of the comments. First of all, as we mentioned, we will be widening that corner intersection. That'll include completing the crosswalks at Greens Ferry and Pole Line. And the city may require additional requirements along our two points of entry, and we're happy to comply with those as needed. If it needs to be painted, painted with crosswalks, or painted with crossing stripes, whatever's needed, we're happy to comply. And we'd just also like to highlight too, that along with what's been proposed for Lot 3, there are other possibilities for limited commercial within the other lots. Limited commercial could be anything from a, another, could be anything from a coffee stand to a florist shop. All those things could be on that corner, as well as what's been currently proposed at the gas station, so... And the other question about how far away is it? It is roughly 500 feet door-to-door from where the gas station will be to the front door of the school. So, thank you.
Alright, thank you. Close out the hearing, and we'll go look at our review criteria and do some deliberation.
Mr. Chairman, really quick, Chris, would you mind kind of speaking? We have a lot more people in the audience than we normally do. Can you kind of speak to a little bit about what our job here is and what us as a commission is supposed to be doing? Because there's, we want to make sure that everyone understands.
Yes, sir. So, obviously, tonight we have two actions for consideration in front of the board. One is a subdivision request from one lot into five lots in a limited commercial zone. The limited commercial zone is already established. The commission is not making a recommendation on any zone changes. In the limited commercial zone, there are certain commercial uses that are permitted outright. That is, the applicant doesn't need request from this commission to do those permitted uses. There's a list of them in the city code, and they range from any number of things. So that is the first action, is the subdivision. Usually, those are fairly mechanical decisions, and if an applicant meets the criteria, they're generally entitled to request the subdivision consideration. The second action tonight is the special use permit, which is really limited to the own, only the fact that the proposed convenience store location would like a gas station. In our code, a convenience store is a permitted outright use, but a convenience store with gas facilities is a special use permit. And under the special use permit, which is also before this commission tonight, we have limited criteria established by our code, and we go through and decide whether or not the special use is permitted or not with our four criteria that our staff outlined before. So there are certain rights that are somewhat set in our code, and there are certain parts where we have some discretion. And we'll go through those criteria in more detail here as the commission deliberates. Does that help?
It does, thank you.
Depending on how you folks would like to move forward, the subdivision approval can occur whether or not the special use permit, but one is not conditioned on the other. Obviously, the special use permit would be conditioned on the subdivision approval. So depending on what your druthers are, which one would you like to hear first? I would recommend we address the special use permit first, because that's kind of the way we do things. We usually wrap up with a subdivision approval criteria, but I'm open to either suggestion tonight.
No, that's fine.
I would rather go the other way.
You want to go subdivision first? Divide, look at the division of lots, and then decide on Lot 3 whether or not a special use permit would be granted for that? Maybe that makes more sense.
That would be my recommendation.
Alright, let's do that then.
Anybody else go with that?
Yeah.
Alright.
Alright, River City Corners subdivision 25-1. The request tonight is to look at a division of a 4.06-acre parcel into five lots. It is already annexed into the city, it has limited commercial zoning. So review criteria number one, whether is up on the board for you, whether definite provision has been made for water supply adequate in terms of quantity and quality for the type of subdivision proposed. Again, a limited commercial subdivision.
Ross Point's the water provider, they've raised no concerns about supply there and the existence of lines already to the properties. I don't see any issue with water.
Okay, I'm getting agreement on that one?
Yes.
Alright. Number two, adequate provisions have been made for a public sewage system and that the existing municipal system, or private system I suppose, can accommodate the proposed sewer flows.
Yeah, the city approved it.
And on this criteria, again, the city has indicated a will-serv letter, has capacity, so these ones are fairly mechanical. Number three, whether proposed streets are consistent with the transportation element of the comprehensive plan.
I think this is probably one of the biggest parts of this, is that both of them, both streets are minor, or, yeah, minor arterials, I think. And this is the last quadrant of that intersection to come forward and develop, so this is a very, very important part of the capacity of that intersection, so it's a fairly major intersection. Greens Ferry is eventually gonna be five, or is five lanes, or designed for five lanes, and Pole Line is as well. So having that, being able to complete the transportation improvements for that is incredibly important. It also provides a pedestrian link that is very, very important to get kids down from the west side, or, excuse me, the east side of Greens Ferry, down on a sidewalk or pathway to the intersection, so they can safely cross Pole Line to get to school, and not have to go down to the mid-block crossing. That, even though it does have a rapid flashing beacon, those are never as effective as intersections with traffic signals for pedestrian crossings. And so this is consistent with the transportation element, and there's actually no internal streets, it's just all external streets, which is a huge benefit to our community.
To widen, end up widening both streets, end up creating pedestrian pathways on both streets that are separated from traffic via that landscape buffer, swale, whatever.
It's a big safety improvement.
Okay, and on that one, I don't think there was any real testimony about the internal structure with the driveways or anything else. That's all gonna be privately maintained and everything else. So internal to the subdivision, those aren't gonna be public roads, they're dedicated.
Right, it's just cross-access easements.
Alright, number four. "All areas of the proposed subdivision involving soil or topographical conditions presenting hazards have been identified, and the proposed uses of these areas are compatible with such conditions."
I think the only hazard that was identified is the pipeline and its location, and Phillip 66 Yellowstone Pipeline people are, seem like they're, they're being dealt with by just giving them a 50-foot-wide easement green space around their infrastructure, so that generally takes care of that, and they've got special crossing conditions that are being met by the developer, so I think that's the only thing that's there, and it's being adequately identified and mitigated.
Agreed, okay, thank you. Number five, "The area for the proposed, for the subdivision is zoned for the proposed use, and the use conforms to other requirements found in the code."
I think this is one where there's kind of some misunderstanding. So the property is zoned limited commercial now.
Yes.
Right.
The subdivision doesn't change that. It doesn't change what the uses of that site, what the permitted uses of that site are. So I don't have any issue with the subdivision itself.
Alright, I mean, as it stands right now, today, they could go and put five different buildings or six different buildings on the one parcel.
Exactly.
The only thing a subdivision does is allow different ownership.
Correct. Yeah.
They could technically lease pads if they wanted to, on one parcel.
Yep.
And finally, number six, "The developer has made adequate plans to ensure the community bears no more than its fair share of cost to provide the service by paying fees or otherwise."
Yeah, they're responsible for all the impact fees and doing off-site improvements.
Yeah, their furniture improvements are particularly costly, to be honest. I mean, that's an expensive corner to develop, and they even got to move a traffic signal mast arm.
Yeah, between the street widening, the dedications that are required for that, the improvements along the street, and then the impact fees, that's substantial cost.
It's substantial, it probably more than covers their impact. I mean, impact fees are meant to cover all their impacts, and they're also the adjoining infrastructure development is pretty extensive, relatively speaking.
Okay, that's all I had, commissioners. Now, we did have some recommendations on this, but it sounds like the recommendations were tied to both, so we can go ahead and deliberate on the subdivision approval at this point, and then circle back around on... I think there's seven recommendations for both PUD and subdivision conditions. I don't know that any of them were specific to the PUD specifically, so the conditions are one through seven, and with the exception of number seven being following construction of the, I'd say, not homes, that's obviously a transplant, but, "Street trees shall be planted by the developer in the spring and fall following construction of the sites." Make that modification. But I don't know that any of these were specific to the PUD.
But is this a PUD?
I'm sorry, excuse me.
Special Use Permit, SUP, or it's a typo in the staff report.
I misread that, I apologize. I correctly read it, but it was...
In reading through these conditions, my opinion is all seven of these conditions apply to the subdivision?
That's the intent. The intent of this section is to go apply these conditions to... The intent of this section is, um, to go apply these conditions to the subdivision of which then you could, um, as Justin elaborated, we have those six arenas. When you get and hear the special use permit, you technically can apply special conditions beyond what code would otherwise require to that special use permit if there was a, a way that you guys wanted to entertain that.
Okay. So my recommendation is to, if we're going to vote on this one, then, uh, look at these seven conditions for this one and we'll, we'll treat the SUP separately.
My, my question on the conditions is I still don't understand condition number three. The proposed subdivision must be completed in a single phase. I don't understand what that means.
The intent of that is in our code, it says that, it's to clarify that when you do the project and when they do the plating, prior to plat, they're going to do all of the off-site improvements and associated internal improvements that are needed to satisfy the elements of the plat, that they won't be able to break this up into two phases. So hypothetically, let's just say there's this, the special use permit, whatever the outcome, they did that portion of the subdivision, they come to the city and they go, we only want to do the east portion now and we want to break it up and do the second portion later. This makes it really clear, no, you're going to do the whole thing in one construction phase.
Okay. So would it be addressed with condition number three or condition number two that they need to have all those off-site improvements done, including the landscaping, including the roadway through the property, the private roadway through the property? Is that part of the master development agreement or is that part of the single phase?
Well, the master development agreement.
Or can we, can we make it a condition on there that the subdivision requires those internal roads to be done? My concern is that we end up with just the parcel where this convenience store is proposed with one access point only off a pole line and the road going out to Greens Ferry, which is shown on the drawings, is never built.
My interpretation is, that's what number three is saying, the whole subdivision must be completed in a single phase, not necessarily the individual lots and the buildings, but the subdivision, the frontage.
That's what I want to clarify.
Yeah. That's my interpretation. That's the way I've always interpreted it.
So if you were to amend that condition, you would say something to the effect of the subdivision must be completed in a single phase inclusive of internal circulation?
Okay.
Yeah.
And, and condition number seven, I'm not following why trees wouldn't be done now and why we would wait until buildings are added or built.
I think it's probably a leftover from maybe a residential subdivision requirement. I think you're right. Um, it's, it's appropriate to have the, the frontage. So usually, like in, in residential subdivision, the house construction beats up the home front, the street frontage and you can't put a street tree in.
I could see that happening like along the, the backside, the buffer. That probably won't be built until there's something built on those sites.
Right.
But along the streets, I think that should all be complete.
Yeah. This actually says construction of homes, which is not applicable.
Right. And so I think we'd.
Could amend it.
Yeah. Condition seven should probably say something to the effect of final landscape tran, plans for street trees. Um, well, street trees shall be planted, um, as part of the development of the subdivision. And just leave it at that.
Yeah. It's part of, it's part of the single phase.
Right. And they can, they'll, I'm sure they're going to have a property owners association or a commercial development association that'll maintain. So, so that.
Agreed.
And so, yeah, the frontage improvements are the responsibility of either the property owners association or the adjoining property owner.
Yeah. Correct. Right?
Anything else?
But, but commissioners, it's the timing you're looking at on the trees, right? When, when do those trees need to be in?
Part of the subdivision construction.
I, I'm thinking that number seven should read, the second sentence should read, street trees shall be planted by the developer in the spring and fall preceding building construction.
And oftentimes, like with commercial, they post a bond or surety for, like when it gets into, you obviously don't want them planting trees, you know, late November, December, right? Cause the ground ain't right. So they'll go and they'll post a bond or surety and then come the springtime, there's usually some items that they, some bullet items that they install and then they release the surety for that. So there's ways in the commercial that we generally do that, you add that clarity in the construction improvement agreement, the approval landscape plans and how they coordinate with the engineering division for those off-site improvements.
Okay. So how do we say that here? Following construction, I, I think is, is what I'm struggling with.
So with a rate, so with a subdivision that, like a standard subdivision, like for instance, I'll, and I'll bring it up because Fieldstone, it's across the street, right? So the frontage improvements on pole line and Greens Ferry, street trees were put in as part of the subdivision improvements.
Right.
And I think the same applies here.
Okay.
So it's just part of the subdivision improvements. Individual lot development can happen at a later time. Cause that's, they're not going to im, they're all getting.
Yeah, their landscaping plans for their individual parcels, but the street improvement is what I'm concerned with.
Yeah, the street trees happens as part of the subdivision development.
Proceeding, proceeding construction of the sites.
Yeah. I think we could append it to number four.
I just have never seen number seven spelled out separately in any other subdivision we've done when we start talking about street trees. So it threw me for a loop.
I conferred with the city engineer, we could probably remove seven and the frontage improvements are included in the construction improvement agreement.
Perfect.
Okay.
Cool. All right. All that being said.
Sorry for the confusion.
That's fine. Somebody like to make a motion?
So I'll make a motion here. Looking for my sample. I move to approve the River City Corner subdivision and the subdivision file number is S U B D dash twenty-five dash one, finding that it meets the approval criteria in Post Falls Municipal Code seventeen dot twelve dot zero six zero, as outlined in our deliberation here and subject to the conditions of one through six as, uh, as contained in the staff report and direct staff to prepare a reasoned decision.
Do we need to mention anything about removing seven and incorporate that into?
I think he's got it with one through six.
Okay.
Would we include on condition three?
Yeah.
The internal access driveways?
Yeah.
To be included as the subdivision improvements?
Okay. So, uh, amending condition three to say the proposed subdivision must be completed, completed in a single phase, which includes internal access, how'd you say that?
Internal access circulation?
Internal access and circulation.
Have a motion on the floor?
Second.
And a second. Go call, please.
Stephenson?
Yes.
Kimball?
Yes.
Wilhelm?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Carey?
Yes.
All right. Move into the special use permit review.
All right. River City Corners, S, special use permit twenty-five dash one. Again, addressing the use of the lot three, proposed lot three from the subdivision for a convenience store with gas station facilities. Number one, whether implementation of the special use would or would not conform to the purposes of the applicable zoning district, uh, which is commercial light or, what is it like? Limited commercial.
Limited commercial.
Limited commercial. So.
I mean, if implemented, it does conform to that zoning district.
And, and the intent of the LC zone is to permit neighborhood compatible, commercial retail and service, modest in scale. So pretty, pretty straightforward there.
Right. I mean, the, the special use permit here is for the gas pumps, not the convenience store, right? So, I mean, the convenience store is allowed outright in that zone.
So the question is just the gas pumps?
It's really the gas pumps and the, and that as a use is what we're talking about here tonight, uh, not whether it's a gas, or a convenience store or a coffee stand or anything else that would be outright allowed with just a building permit and they could go do it tomorrow.
See, that, that threw me off there a little bit because when, when it was going to come to the safety on this one, I thought the convenience store, gas station was one or I wouldn't have voted for it.
What do you mean?
I'll explain when you come into the, this health, safety and welfare on this.
Okay. Sure. Uh, and let's break it down. So on number one, we're talking about, again, whether this special use, i.e. the extension of the gas station, I'm sorry, the convenience store used to the gas station combo use would or would not conform to the purposes of the limited commercial zone.
I think there's a lot of examples in, in our area where there are gas stations in fairly close proximity to residential areas and little nodes. And I think that's really the, the whole point of this. When we, when we zoned it in two thousand eighteen, when Anexon was zoned in twenty-eighteen as limited commercial, um, it was done so knowing that it was at the intersection of two minor arterials, which are supposed to have, I mean, eventually they're going to have, I think, Rob, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think what, fifteen thousand cars per, ten to fifteen thousand cars per day on each street, um, at capacity. Um, it is not a, it's not, the roads are designed for high volume. That's what they're there for. Um, that's what our transportation master plan says. And so, um, so if you're looking at a, an intersection that has twenty thousand cars per day going through it, then that's, um, I think that's an appropriate location for a gas station.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you.
Okay.
Number two?
Number two, whether the proposed use constitutes an allowable special use as established by this chapter for the zoning district involved and complies with all other applicable laws, ordinances and regulations of the city and the state.
So this one is just going directly back to our ordinance and our ordinance says that gas stations are a special use, allowable special use in the LC zone through this process, through the special use permit process. So I don't see any question with number two.
I'd agree.
Yeah. In the land, in the land use category and zoning classification.
Yep. They're required to, and they are required to follow all laws and ordinances.
Can I ask one ordinance question? Does the city of Post Falls have any restrictions on beer and wine sales in proximity to schools?
I don't know off the top of my head.
I think that's a liquor board question.
Well, liquor board for liquor, but beer and wine is city.
Is it?
Yeah.
Okay. I didn't know that.
So I wasn't sure if there were additional restrictions on the city side.
Hopefully they're carding the elementary kids.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. Number three, whether the proposed use will or will not be compatible with the health, safety and welfare of the public or with the land uses in the vicinity of the proposal.
I see serious safety issues with over two thousand kids going to a gas station in the morning before school, at lunchtime, after school. There may be crosswalks, but kids are kids. They're going to run across, they're not going to care about that. With two thousand kids, all the high school students that have cars, all the parents that have cars, all the teachers that have cars, that is going to be a major cluster of people trying to get there. And it's not just the teenagers that might have some sense, but those little kids running across, back and forth that street, when the bell rings for school, they're not going to care about red lights, green lights. So I, I was under the impression this was together, the convenience store and the, the gas, the gas pumps, but it wasn't. But I, I see down the road, some kids getting hit by cars because all that traffic, because that's where they're going to hang out, is right there. So I think this is a terrible idea.
What, what do you see the difference if, if it's just a convenience store or if it's a convenience store with a gas station?
I don't think it should be either.
How, so.
Come on. Please.
My concern is that the LC zone already says convenience stores are okay.
It can be a convenience store.
Yeah.
Says health, safety and welfare.
Right. So the, the LC zone allows for a convenience store. It just requires a special use permit for gas pumps. I mean, they.
I, I have to agree. I, I think a gas station is a bad idea there. There are a lot of kids there. Um, I think convenience store, I don't know from, it could be okay. The kid who's going to high school would love it and a lot of people that's in walking distance to their, where they live and stuff, there's a lot of houses around there, some walking distance. But I live not too far from there myself and I travel that street a lot in the morning and in the afternoon and it's a twenty mile an hour zone during school or, you know, when kids are present and nobody hardly ever goes twenty miles an hour. So I would really, really be worried about a gas station being there and the extra traffic that a gas station would be in, you know, bring in. Convenience store, like I said, it's already zoned for that, so we, we can't really stop that. But, um, I would have a real problem with a gas station going in there.
Yeah. I'll add to that. I, I also, you know, when I, back in twenty eighteen, I was probably only a couple of months on this commission and thinking back, that's why I asked the question earlier. The only reason we're kind of here today and this is not a residential area is because of that jog it does. That line runs all the way down pole line, all of that Fieldstone. It actually goes through the neighborhood that's right next door, but I believe it's through underneath the street, which then gives it that automatic easement where this one would be kind of, kind of funky. Um, you know, commercial, you know, I'm kind of with, um, with Biggie Joe, like maybe it'll be good. I think the gas station's going to create too much. Um, I also live in that area and I got a high schooler there and so I know how much traffic is there during the school time in the morning and the afternoon. Um, I think it just opens up too many, uh, too many questions about safety and welfare in that area. And then I think just down the street across from the, from the hospital, or high school, there's also another development going in, so that will increase traffic just a little bit too down there. So that's, um, that's my two cents.
I think when we have, when we, we look at this, I mean, the, the real thing we're looking at, well, one thing that maybe silence is deafening, but the school district didn't mention any, any traffic or safety concerns, um, having.
I was surprised by that.
Three schools within a half mile of this location. And so, and I certainly do appreciate the safety concerns of everyone with regard to kids walking to school. I designed Fieldstone subdivision, I designed, uh, the Vineyard subdivision. Um, and those are, you know, having the pedestrian connectivity is important. That goes with the subdivision, with the gas station thing, um, and traffic associated with gas station. Um, you know, they can outright put a Dutch Brothers in there and create just as much, if not three times the traffic a gas station's going to generate, um, on a, and just do it completely outright without having to worry about it. And I can just imagine the number of high school kids who are going to get, would get their, their sugar caffeine fix on the way to school by ripping into a, a Dutch Brothers in that location. Um, I do see, I do think that, um, it's going to develop as commercial and I think having a gas station at that location, uh, where, you know, not, not talking about today, but, you know, we're talking about in the future as this develops out and our community grows, that is an intersection of two major, or two major roads. It's, they're arterials and, um, that's typically where you find convenience stores with gas stations is at those locations. And I think, um, and I think that's, for that reason, it's appropriate and I think the safety mitigation comes to, you know, making sure that during those times of days when there are a lot of pedestrians, those school in, school out. when there are a lot of pedestrians, so school in, school out, I do know that there are pedestrian, there are crossing guards in there shepherding kids across the street. And I think that's an important function that the school district does. And it's very appreciated by us in the community. And I think that the pedestrian facilities that'll be here will mitigate the issues with regards to pedestrian safety and traffic going in and out of a commercial subdivision.
School district ever, ever go beyond neutral when they answer these?
I've seen them go both directions in my career.
You've been here a long time.
I have.
Chris, you have anything on that?
With the SUP, I don't see anything in there that limits the size of the gas station portion. I understand the convenience store portion, you know, code has specifics to that. Is, should we be looking at, or is it something we should consider looking at, is limiting the size of the gas station portion, you know, if we were to proceed? Because as an SUP, I think we can do that.
Right. I think.
I don't know, we should. I'm just asking a question.
That's a, that's a great question because the, obviously, right, it's not a, is it a Flying J Maverick? Or is it a, as they show in their site plan?
Seven eleven.
Seven eleven, so four pumps, right? So, or four pumps, so eight spots to fuel. So eight fuel locations.
And we do have the ability to condition this. If you wanted to limit the number of pumps, limited the hours of operation or anything else, if that was specific to the gas station concerns, we do have that flexibility being a special use permit.
I think we should at least consider it because when I look at this site plan, I see three fuel stations, so that's 12 pumps.
Is that, is that 12? Because the one we first saw was six, but, or was four, excuse me. The one that was in the.
I mean, and we don't have, I don't really have scale here. So each one of those would have, normally, you know, when I look at seven elevens or whatever, you've got two on each side. And if this is three of those.
Okay, because I, I.
I'd see six.
This is a different site plan than the one that they had in their presentation. So the presentation is a little more refined. I believe it had four. Or, so it had one, two, three, four islands.
Two on each, I thought, didn't you say?
Yeah, well, it had four tanks. Gas, gas pumps with fueling on eight, so spots for eight cars to fuel at once. As I believe that was on there. Would you mind pulling up their presentation really quick, please? Mr. Ebnerz.
Okay, so that one's different.
Yeah, one, two, three, four.
So you get eight cars in there at once.
Right.
So my, my thought would be if we were to proceed, there should be some wording in there that limits to what's shown there or shown here, whatever it is.
Right, I think that, I think that's reasonable.
Any thoughts on what that wording should be?
That's a good question.
Well, even if you did allow that, then you're going to have a long line of cars on both sides to that pump because that's the closest gas station to that school. So however you do that, you're going to have a big line of cars right there. And little kids running in and out of that store.
And I'm not disagreeing with you. I'm not even, I'm just asking some questions here.
I mean, the reality is, is if there is a long line, it just speaks to the need for it in that location.
That's true too.
We need kids a lot too.
If the demand's there too, so.
All right, why don't we go pine over that language and
Okay.
get move on to the next one.
All right, number, let's go to number four, since we've had quite a bit of discussion on number three, and whether the proposed use will or will not comply with the goals and policies found within the comprehensive plan.
I see this one is both ways. You know, like goal six, the, goal six, let's see. On a goal three, walkability, commercial services approximately residential. But then the there could be stuff, I'm sure there's something about. There's an infill here, so that would be good there, but then talk about safety, but then, you know, the connectivity. So there's, I think there's both pros and cons to this one.
Does anybody else have any thoughts on that one? We had some discussion about underutilized property. Some discussion both by the applicant and the staff as to improvements that would be met by allowing this, although I think we've addressed some of that in the subdivision of rural, so.
Well, I mean, one of the important parts about, and this is why they're coming together, right? Is that commercial subdivisions generally don't happen unless they have an anchor tenant to start them out, right? So no one spends the million plus dollars that they're going to have to do on the frontage improvements to move that traffic signal, the mast arm and foundation base and to put in the road widening and to put in the pathways and the swales and the street trees without there being an anchor tenant to get that going, to get them started. It just doesn't happen. And so the reality is, is that these are, the reason they're together is that they are part and parcel. And so it goes to goal six with regards to transportation, providing transportation infrastructure. That's a big one. And I think it all, you know, and that ties again back to safety because even though the conditional use permit is not necessarily directly involved with that, it's, it's the reason they're doing the subdivision. And so I think it hits policy 67 with regards to pedestrian connectivity. And as well as, you know, infill, infill development. I mean, Lonnie Bitman owned that property for, I don't know, 40, 50 years. And, and it's, all the development happened around him, much to his chagrin. And when he finally sold it, and it, and he, he was the one who brought it in as limited commercial. So, you know, this is, this is infill development, and this has been planned since 2018 and in some way, shape or form, and this is the shape or form that we're seeing tonight. So I think it meets requirements or it meets our goals and policies with regards to infill development as well, which is, I think, really important. That's not the, it'd be nice to get that intersection fully developed and fully built out so that it, it functions properly, both from a traffic standpoint as well as a land use standpoint.
Any other comments?
Okay, thank you.
Before there's a motion, anybody want to?
I'll make a motion.
Well, any thoughts on eliminating, limiting the number of pumps? Chris, you brought that up. Did you have any thoughts?
I was asking more as a question. I didn't have a specific.
Yeah, we don't.
I mean, I do think it's appropriate to limit the pumps to what they show in their site plan in their, in the presentation. Because, you know, that's the, that's the picture that we were sold, right, if you will? I mean, that's what they're, that's where they're.
Staff report, you mean?
Not the one staff report, in the one, in the applicant's presentation.
Yeah, it's different.
That has four spots. It's a more refined site plan that allows for fueling of eight vehicles. I think that, you know, just the fact that, I mean, I know when I drive by a gas station and it's full, I go to the next one.
Yeah, that's exactly what I do too.
So, I mean, other people do other things and I get that. So, but limiting the number of gas pumps will limit the volume of traffic going in and out. Really, the price will, but.
So Commissioner, do we know what that number was? It's unclear to me if we were to impose a condition or make a motion with a condition of the limited number of gas pumps.
I think it's four pumps.
Do four.
We would limit it to four pumps, allowing for eight vehicles.
That would be double sided.
Yeah.
Or double sided pumps.
I'm just trying to make it clear for what we are suggesting, if that were to be a condition on any motion. The specificity helps, so thank you.
Yes. Are there any specific, can recommend, staff recommended conditions for the special use permit?
None on this. I mean, we did hear some issues with some lighting somebody did bring up. I mean, so there's, you guys could theoretically entertain like downlit lighting, making sure that does.
Isn't that part of our code? Downward directed?
I think, yeah, the new commercials that is in there.
Yeah.
We don't limit pedestal lighting, I don't think. That's another thing that, I don't believe our code does do that though for standing pedestal lighting.
That low level?
Yeah.
Pedestrian stuff. Keep people from tripping.
Any other thoughts or are we ready for a motion?
No.
Somebody like to make a motion?
I'll make one. I move to deny River City Coroner's SUP file number 25-1, finding that it does not meet the approval criteria in Post Falls Municipal Code 18.20.070 as outlined in our deliberation and direct staff to prepare a written reasoned decision.
Have a motion on the floor?
No, I seconded.
Okay, and we have a second? Roll call, please.
Stephenson?
So if we're voting to deny, yes would mean deny.
Correct.
All right, in that case, yes.
Kimball?
No.
Wilhelm?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Carey?
Yes.
Okay. All righty. I think we're going to take a five minute recess. All right, let's call meeting back to order. Next hearing tonight is G2 Development. We got a couple actions on that tonight.
Yes, good evening Commissioners. John Manley, Planning Manager here with the City of Post Falls, presenting the G2 annexation, zone change and subdivision. And their associated files is as you see there. The owner of this is G2 Real Property Holdings LLC, and the applicant is Scott MacArthur. So there's three requests, and, you know, I'll do my best to tell the story from staff's perspective. But the first one is to annex approximately 10.05 acres. And your part of this would be to review their requested residential mix RM zoning and forward that on to City Council. Then review their requested residential mix as part of a zoning, the zone change request on approximately 8.3 acres and forward that to council. So they'll both, those, both requests, you're not making the decision on any, but you're forwarding on a zoning recommendation to council.
And the 8.3, just for clarification, is already in the city?
Yes, that's in the city. And when you look at the subdivision, you could scratch your head and go, why is the subdivision 8.02? But yet the two on the annexation don't sum to the. Yes, that's in the city. And when you look at the subdivision, you can scratch your head and go, why is the subdivision 8.02, but yet the two on the annexation don't sum to the 8.02? And that's because of the right-of-way that would be dedicated as part of the annexation. So, but the subdivision request is for the 8.02 after right-of-way, and to do that within to 105 residential lots in that residential mix zone.
18.02.
18.02.
18.02, thanks.
Sorry.
All that math and numbers. Yes. Why we gotta stick at the two items?
I don't like them. Math is dead.
So the location of this is right here on the southeast corner of Serenga and East Horse Haven. To the far east, where you see Annexation Area B, that's that 10.05 acres. And then here you see the Zone Change Request. That's that Area A. And then together, they sum that 18 point whatever and change subdivision request.
Post Falls math.
Yep. Here's the surrounding zoning. So because the Area A is in the city, that's why you see some yellow there. It currently is the R1 zoning. Everything to the west and to the south that's in the city, for the most part, is R1, and a little notch right to the north of Horse Haven. Where you see no color, that's an annexation request, so that's why there's no color. To the north of East Horse Haven, you see that purple. That's the Smart Code Zone. So that was, I don't know the date in which that was, that came to the city. But that Smart Code Zone's been in the city for a bit, and the dark purple is the SC4, with the light purple the SC3. You see those lots are a little smaller in the SC4. That there is more of that, that, that allows for more density, very akin to that, what you see here, that medium density, right there. There's some medium-density R2 zoning. And then a transition to the north to that lighter purple, which is more like a single-family zoning designation. Everything to the east and south are larger properties or smaller properties in the Cootney County for, for their jurisdiction. Looking at the, some additional information, the water provider would be the Ross Point Water District. The, currently on this, there'd be more, it is large lot, single-family. It's over the Rossburn Prairie Aquifer. For wastewater, the City of Post Falls would be the service provider, and there is capacity to serve it. For any existing structures, there, it would be required for the existing septic systems to be abandoned, except for potentially, you see, I'll go back. There is, on this side, a pre-existing house that's on that. I talked to the applicant. The intent is for that house, annexation in that farm, to continue that use until such time later. And then that's when that would transition, and the second phase of that subdivision would go into that later on. For traffic, Horse Haven Avenue is along a northern boundary, and it's a minor collector, and Serenga Street on the western boundary is a minor collector. Additional rights-of-way would be needed on Horse Haven Avenue, as it would be part of the annexation. Here is your future land use designation. You see Zone Change Area MB again. This is all in the low-density, and it allows up to eight dwellings per acre. And the residential mix is an influencing zone in that future land use designation. Here's the project site in proximity to the central island. That's the focus area that's in the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan is divvied up into little portions and map, and, and within the Post Falls. And because this area is a large county island and pocket, it became, it was denoted as the central island. Looking at some of the principles of the central island, it looks at successful development of this area, when incorporation will, in city limits, will likely rely on incentives rewarding developers with higher density or modified design standards in exchange for forward-thinking integration of the land into the surrounding context. So I believe this falls in line to their request for the RM. The comprehensive goals, for Goal 7, we don't specify everything tonight, but we will highlight a couple. Goal 7 is planned for and established types and quantities of land uses in Post Falls, supporting community needs and a long-term sustainability. Some policies that may be considered consistent with that would be encourage compatible infill development, encourage annexation of county islands within the city, ensure that adequate land is available for future housing needs, helping serve residents of all ages, incomes, and abilities through the provisions of different types of housings and price levels. Looking at Goal 6, maintain and improve Post Falls' transportation network on pace and concert with the need and plans objectives. You see here Policies 24, 26, and Policy 33. More or less, the three kind of come together as, you know, you're looking at annexations. They help you gain right-of-way, get the utility corridors. They also allow you to create continuity with your sidewalks, trails, and bicycle paths. So they work together in meeting that Goal 6. And I kind of highlighted them and left them on this image here to kind of look at what would occur upon development on this. They would improve Serenga from the southwest corner here, northerly, to the intersection of Serenga and Horse Haven. So looking over to the image on this side of the screen, you can see that on the west side, you have improvements. Then on the east side, that's that section that does not have improvement. So that would, that would be improved with development. Looking at the 1,300 feet of Horse Haven, that is, this is looking easterly down on Horse Haven. So on the right, you would, upon development, you would get frontage improvements along that as well. So that would improve the, both the transportation corridors, as well as creating that continuity in sidewalks and trails for this area, improving accessibility in that central island focus area. Here is the three review criteria for a zone change. We've kind of gone over the first two. The last one, I'll hold to the end as we're looking, we did notice all jurisdictions, so I'll address that then. Do want to point out on compatibility of the surrounding area, I'll go back to, I kind of mentioned this in the staff report, that when you're looking at the subdivision later on, they do kind of go from larger lots along the south, typical single-family, and it transitions to the north along Horse Haven to more of that cottage-type product, is what they're proposing. And you can see here, it's akin to the medium-density that's just on the north side of Horse Haven. Now looking at the, any other questions I have for the annexations or zoning?
I do.
Yep.
So I think with residential mix, it comes with a zoning development agreement. Is that correct?
Yeah, we would incorporate that in the annexation agreement.
That's in the annexation agreement. And is it appropriate to add things into that at this point, or is that a City Council thing? Maybe we should ask them.
Think you can make recommendations that we would add as suggestions. I'll go and confer with Chris. He's nodding yes, so, yeah, you can, you guys could propose.
Language?
What's the plan for the existing septic at those houses that are there? They're gonna stay.
I'll let the applicant chime in, but I believe, when they get up, I believe the house would stay on septic until such time it fails or the time it develops. And then Phase 1 is Zone A, so any sort of, if there is a septic out there on Zone A, any existing house would get put on sanitary sewer or they would have to be capped or disbanded or whatever on the Phase 1.
Okay.
Okay. So subdivision review. Here is the proposed subdivision, and here's that reference lot layout that I said. Along the western side, these are the more typical single-family type lots, or it's more similar along this section of their proposed subdivision. So along the west, southern half, and the east half.
Yep. Would you say that's R1?
Uh, I don't have those lots.
The size of the lots.
I'll let the applicant, when he comes up, say what the square footage and lot width.
Yeah.
But I think they're more similar to, like, a typical R1.
Yeah, they're all 9,000, 7,000, 8,000.
Right.
Yes. 6,500 is the minimum lot size for an R1, so they're larger than a typical R1.
And they're all 60 feet wide, too.
So it's halfway surrounded by bigger lots than what R1 would put.
Yeah, and then you have a city street going through along this section, and then you have a city street going along the north-south here. They do propose, I believe, a private road connecting it, connecting to what their plan is for cottage lots, 62 cottage lots along the northern tier. This is their, they do have, provide some open space. I'll go into the matrix on that. But with the RM and with the cottage, they do require a certain percentage of open space. And I wanted to denote here the, and I'll come back to it later, the 70,730 square feet of open space is what tract day amounts to. So Criteria 1, definite provisions have been made for a water system, and there's adequate supply. And I have in your staff report Exhibit A5, is that Will Serblav, Letter for Ross Point Irrigation to Provide Water. Criteria 2 is, is there sanitary sewer available? And in the staff report, we did denote that there's capacity to provide services to this. Criteria 3, the proposed streets are consistent with the transportation element in the comprehensive plan. The subdivision should not have a negative impact on the transportation network, and I denote that the roadways would dedicate the rights-of-way easements that are necessary for both on Serenga and Horse Haven if needed. I do show here, and the reason for this red box is so you can kind of see long-term, here's these blue, the main access points ultimately for this project. And also, they're looking at providing connectivity to the southeast portion, so when those areas come into the city, it would extend the, the street network. So ultimately, it would look like a master-planned community. That's the goal, at least. And so that would be stubbing out to the south through these, the county parcel, allowing those to develop. Review Criteria 4 is all areas of the proposed subdivision, which may involve soil or topographical conditions presenting hazards. The site's over the, cited Aquifer, and there's no known hazards. Here is where that open space comes into play here. The area of the proposed subdivision is zoned for the proposed use, and the use conforms with the requirements found on the code. So when planning looks at this and is coordinating with, is it a complete application, we start looking as well. Can you meet the requirements for the residential mix zoning or the cottage housing? And you can see here, they meet both. And it's not additive. So it's, you know, theoretically, if you meet the 7% open space, the cottage product is permitted outright in that. And so you don't necessarily have to, in addition, make that what they call here the 20,000. So I think this, the intent of this is for the applicant to show that they're, they're more than meeting both of those scenarios. And then looking at some intent, the residential mix, I underlined here, for the residential mix zone, it's intended to accommodate a mix of residential community with a variety of housing types that bearing densities within the development. And I've kind of already gone over with the two types of lot sizes and product that they intend to do. And if you look into context of what was done with that Smart Code, and I believe I added that to your staff report as an exhibit, collectively, there is some diverse product in that area. They do propose single-family homes, and so the intent would be condition the referenced annexation agreement and development agreement to be consistent with their application and provide single-family homes within this area. The cottage home residential performance standards, here are the purpose, and then it's stated here in code, and I referenced that how cottage homes are permitted outright here in the RM zoning district. Review Criteria 6 looks at the developer paying for its fair share. And I cite here how impact fees and cap fees are paid at the time of building permit to deal with impacts to parks, public safety, streets, fire, EMS, and water reclamation facilities. There's the agencies that were notified. Here's the comments. They're all remained neutral or no utilities. Their Cootney County, they review at time of permitting, and as common for them, they would, they generally review the construction plans and coordinate that prior tuitions of permits. And they review the Platts. There's the sixth review criteria. There's the Zone Change Review Criteria. And once again, there's a proposed subdivision plan. Any questions for me?
Lot 5 on the south part of that, that one's bigger. Maybe I missed this, but...
Yes.
What's there?
That is a pre-existing home, and that is when I referenced that in Phase 1, that, that house would then have to be connected to sanitary sewer as part of Phase 1.
I thought that was in the other one. Okay.
Yeah, the other ones I referenced over here, that's Phase 2. It's supposed to be a two-phase project. So sometime in the future, when this side develops, that's when the desire would be to cook that up to sanitary sewer at that time.
Gotcha. And then while it doesn't look like it on this subdivision, small neighborhood commercial is allowed in RM zoning? Is that correct?
It is, and that's why they, on that one slide where I would propose the condition would be, so that way they don't come in later and change the conditions of this, is, you know, they present to you tonight, single-family homes, single-family lots, and then you condition accordingly.
Okay.
Are all the cottage home lots, at least as they're laid out there, are all of them only access from Givens?
Yes, so all these would be access off the internal circulation. You'd have this Ginden Avenue, then you'd take this private drive here, this lane.
Yep.
And then you would access either the rear, that would be fronting a green space, or the ones that are fronting the right-of-way along here. And so that's how kind of they would go through here.
John, if I'm looking at this right, so Givens Lane is basically a glorified alley, and all the lots fit the fronts, so the houses face either Horse Haven or the open space. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So they're out, so, okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
And then you do provide parking along here. Cottage homes do require 0.25 off-site parking stalls per unit. And so this is how the applicant decided to meet that requirement.
Is there any onsite parking at the, on the cottage homes?
Well, they'd be required to meet the two offsites per their units, so each... Yeah, so each one of there, they have to have two for their lots. No different than any other single-family home.
Yeah, okay.
So this, this is their overflow parking.
Overflow, okay.
And then the ones that are fronting on Horse Haven, they would have on-street parking adjacent to those lots in front of their units.
And so there's only parking on one side there? Is that...
You'd have parking on the Horse Haven, and then you'd have these parking along this, and...
And then parking on the lots themselves.
Yep. Then you get two for each lot.
And then Horse Haven is improved, so it's kind of has that, it's not a straight sidewalk. It's kind of...
It was currently not improved, and then image...
Well, I know, but it would be.
Yeah, it would be improved with curb swell and sidewalk, so it's gonna get widened at the time of development.
But what I'm saying is it's kind of got the, like, defined area, like, here's the parking a little bit off the actual main road. That's what those... Is that what I'm looking at here?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, that's their width of improvements. We're the actual striping and the parking. The parking lane is the south eight feet of that road section. And then you'd still have your two travel lanes.
Okay. Any other questions? All right.
What is up there in that corner?
That existing house?
This, this corner?
Over up there, yeah.
Bob Ginden's old house?
Not a part.
It's not a part of it.
Existing house is not part of the subdivision.
But when this thing got annexed in, there was a condition that the offsite improvements would be done at a time of development. So we will get a completed intersection with development of this.
Okay. It's good forethought.
Every now and then.
Right? It all comes together sometimes.
Any other questions? All right. Write the applicant up.
Hi, good evening. Scott MacArthur, MacArthur Engineering. Here tonight on behalf of G2 Real Property Holdings LLC. We're talking about the G2 Development. We worked closely with staff. We worked closely with staff to, to come up with a way to implement our client's desired layout. As Mr. Manley mentioned, these two properties are in question here tonight with the yellow star signifying the R1-zoned property that's in the city and the pink star signifying the requested annexation property. Currently, the property to the east is zone Ag Suburban in Cootney County, as are the properties east of that, which are single-family residential homes. That it's highly unlikely that we'll see those in my lifetime come into the city. The property to the north of that Ag Sub property is SMARTCODE. Very high-density development, attached structures, attached units. You have some R2 zoning as well with some duplex units there in the orange. And then you have some R1-zone properties to the west of that. The R1-zone property right now that we're, that's in question, has a single-family residence with out structures, and it's farmed on a routine basis, as is the Ag Sub property that's in the county. This is infill property, and as Mr. Manley mentioned, this area is in need of improvements to the infrastructure to accommodate the traffic that we now have. It's also important to note that Horse Haven is a corridor for Ross Point Water District. And this development will improve the water system through this area. We'll get to that later on. Again, just a quick slide, just to show the existing zonings and the requested zoning. So you have some existing R1 zones, SMARTCODE, and we're requesting the residential mix zone for this eighteen-point-zero-two acres. As Mr. Manley showed you, the proposed subdivision, we are limiting ourselves to the eight units per acre, and we're working with the city to accommodate the existing use to remain in place on the western, or excuse me, the eastern ten acres of property that has a, a longtime resident who still farms that property and has cattle and grazing that exists there until such time as he chooses to move. Yes.
So I've already asked this question, but I'm going to ask you, you're the engineer. So kind of all the way around and all up that side, that would qualify as R1 right now, the size?
Correct. From, from here on the east, it's adjacent to similar eight thousand, two hundred and fifty square foot lots here on, in the county. But here on the east, you have roughly, well, you have forty-three single-family homes that far exceed the sixty-five-hundred square foot minimum requirement.
Correct.
This entire property could be developed with sixty-five-hundred square foot lots, no open space, no traffic, or you know, no improvement.
About how many houses would that be?
It's hard to say.
Destination? Six per acre?
Yeah, you're looking at five, five units per acre. So, yeah, you're, you're looking at a significant amount of home. I mean, that's, that's what we're looking at, the trade-off here for the, for the affordable opportunities.
Right.
That can also share and be, serve as a buffer between the high-density to the north and the requested existing R1 to the south, east, and west.
So would I be close to say that if it was just R1, you'd still have about the same amount of houses?
It's, it's fairly close, correct, yeah. So again, here's a different look at the proposed subdivision. We provided the city with a preliminary grading plan, stormwater management plan, sanitary sewer plan, and water infrastructure plan. Here's the sewer plan. As, as discussed before, this existing home here, there are several residences that live on this property. At the time of development, this is a at-least two-phase development. We're, we're, mention two phases in the request. It's a at-least two-phase. And I think that's the language that we'd like to have in the record tonight, is something we discussed with the city. We originally looked at starting the development with the west, eight-plus acres, moving into the ten acres to the east. However, depending on the occupancy remaining in that existing home, it could turn into a three- or four-phase development. But that existing home is on a septic, and that septic would be removed at the time of development of that property. This, or failure, I guess, of that existing system. This existing home here is occupied by one of my clients, one of the property owners. And their home is planned to remain, if you can see that, sorry, the mouse. I believe there was a question about that. They, it will be connected to sewer at the time of development. This existing home here, there are provisions in the plan to connect that home to sanitary sewer as well, as well as the frontage improvements that will be completed across that property as part of the annexation agreement that originally brought that property into the city.
If this was approved RM, could you walk right back around and change that to apartments?
Not with, I don't believe without a, a request for an amendment to the approval.
Correct.
And as it sits right now, there is no attached structures. These are all standalone, single-family residential homes, which is consistent with what I think the intent of the R1 zone is. However, we're providing a significant amount of open space to, to offset the reduced lot sizes.
Mr. MacArthur?
Yes, sir.
I saw on your, in your data table that you're at five-point-eight-three dwelling units per acre on this. Want to make sure that's accurate before I ask you the next question.
I believe there's eight units per acre.
It's eight units per acre? Okay. Okay. Would, so if I'm understanding this right, so if residential mix, RM zone, your client would be okay with a condition of no multifamily development, attached multifamily, and no commercial?
That is correct.
And a density limitation of eight units per acre?
I believe that, I think that's correct with, consistent with the RM zoning. Is that correct?
Well, RM zoning doesn't have a density, so...
It does not have a density.
Does not have a density.
I believe we discussed eight units per acre being our requested limitation.
Which would be what the comprehensive plan...
Correct, yeah, excuse me, yeah.
Okay.
I agree with the limitations that Ray was just talking about, no multifamily, if there's conditions put on this, if it was approved.
And, and I think, once we get a little bit further into the presentation, I think you'll understand the intent of the development is to provide that much-needed opportunity for single-family residential ownership, not rental opportunities that come with the... There, there's an area that is in need of that multifamily. I live within a half mile of this development. I do not prefer to have that in this area, additional in this area. So here's a typical R1-type lot layout. This is lot twelve, backs up to the open space. That's about a four-thousand-square-foot footprint on the ground for a typical R1 home. I don't anticipate a home of that size being constructed there, but this is what you could build with your rear patio, with your front porch, all meeting City of Post Falls allowable setbacks, consistent with the R1 zoning. This is your typical cottage home. The lots that we're proposing are thirty-foot wide. We meet the requirements with this layout. That is an eight-hundred-and-eighty-two-square-foot footprint, consistent with previous approvals, actually exceeding previous approvals for projects in the city for the cottage home development. This is a typical image of what we're proposing. You could put a two-story product here, but right now, this is a, a typical approval with the front loaded to the park, open space or right-of-way. The rear loaded access to a garage, two off-street parking. I would like to go back real fast to the parking question that was raised earlier as well. So in addition to the required supportive parking, I would say, for cottage homes, we also have six additional spaces in the middle, adjacent to open space, with a sidewalk connecting to Horse Haven. We also have some off-street, designated off-street parking that's going to be provided near the open space park and kind of a mix between the single-family use, it's all single-family, but the, the larger single-family lots and the smaller single-family lots. So again, why obtainable housing? It's needed. I want my kids to return here and own a home. I want them to be able to afford that opportunity. We don't have a lot of that opportunity. We have one development in the city right now, two developments, I should say, that I know of that are being developed with that type of product. I think this area is conducive for that, and, and that's why I bring it forward tonight to you. I, I know a lot of veterans and seniors in the area that need low maintenance, affordable housing. They don't need a four-thousand-square-foot, square-foot home. They need something that they can live in, be proud of, with ownership. So that's why we bring this forward tonight. Again, it's a transition from your higher density on the north side of Horse Haven through the south side of Horse Haven into your larger R1-size lots. With this development requirement comes amenities and open space requirements, sidewalks, typical image of what our frontage sidewalk would look like. The homes would have access to this sidewalk through our open space. And that this sidewalk would traverse from this private road section through the property and connect to the sidewalk along our north-south street. And it would also provide an inner block connection to Horse Haven as well. The timing of this connection and the timing of the completion of that sidewalk would all be based on the phasing and allowable density for single-point of access. So as Mr. Manley stated, and I won't reiterate, I believe it's been well-covered. We do meet the four criteria for annexation for our east, ten-point-zero-five acres. I can go through those if you would like, but I think we've covered those well in our narrative and Mr. Manley's staff report. And as his presentation stated, those are met. The three zone change criteria, again, the request for the zone change comes on the request for annexation. We think it's a best fit for the property. We feel it's a conducive use to what's surrounding. It's a nice transition to what we expect to occur to be developed along Sixteenth Avenue at some point in the future. And then you're looking at your six subdivision approval criteria. Again, each item has been addressed in the narrative and in Mr. Manley's presentation. I don't want to reiterate those again. I think we've addressed each item sufficiently, and we meet all the requirements, and I will stand for questions.
Hey, Scott?
Yes.
On the condition on the subdivision about two or more phases, would you be open to an additional condition that says, prior to commencing phase three, that the open space would be completed and the frontage improvements would be completed and/or bonded for?
I think the only concern I have with that is the location of the existing structures along Horse Haven that encroach into...
That's why the bonded for, so you wouldn't have to complete it.
Yeah, I think the bonded for would be sufficient, yeah.
So that way you, yeah, because that's where I want, added that, because I, the sensitivity to our previous conversations, so.
Correct. I think that would be, that would be consistent with our intent. I think that'd be great.
Concern I have is you get three-quarters through, and then you have outstanding obligations. And then if the project fell apart, then, you know, then it puts the city in an awkward position.
And I think it's a similar statement as, at the time of annexation of the western ten, the original ten acres that was annexed into the city as R1. The intent at the time of development was to complete the improvements at that intersection. And we don't want to forego those improvements, so I think that's, I think that condition and/or bonded for would be appropriate.
Two for two on the forethought. Mr. MacArthur?
Yes, sir.
I had a question for you, and I'm going to preface it by saying that I appreciate the fact that this is an attempt to provide affordable housing, and private roads are a double-edged sword.
Correct.
Right? Because they're great now, and in thirty years from now, and I happen to live on one, and you know that, they require replacement, and then people come to the city and they say, hey, will you take over my road? Because we don't have enough money to replace it. And usually, at least in most cases, it's because the development and the homeowner association was not set up to properly fund road maintenance and eventual cert resurfacing and whatnot. And so should this get to an approval point tonight, would you, and I'm going to, I wrote this a little bit earlier. So would you be okay with a condition that said, with regards to the private roads, the developer is, would provide for a mechanism within the CCNRs for a road maintenance and eventual, for road maintenance and eventual resurfacing, and shall provide for a funding mechanism to adequately fund those maintenance costs in addition to and separate from other HOA expenses?
So like a sinking fund for CapEx?
Yeah, it's a sinking fund for the streets that's aside from the maintenance for the, the open space and grass and mowing and whatever else, the snow plowing and the ma, the, that stuff that at least provide for a mechanism, so it happens so that it, it doesn't set them up for failure.
Could I make that condition read that a sinking fund analysis can be completed with staff prior to the development of the private road improvements or lots adjacent to private road improvements?
I mean, however you put the mechanism into the CCNRs, I'm just asking for there to be a mechanism within the CCNRs that provides for in funds, how that is divided up amongst the lots is completely up to, I would say, the developer, but...
I think the...
...by for a mechanism.
And it's hard to, I think my concern, and you've dealt with similar projects like this, my concern is the way the CCNRs are written. I, I, I don't disagree. I think we can do it. Let's simplify it. Let's keep the sinking, yes, let's analyze it that way.
I think you can get creative enough to make it work. It's just, it's something that needs to be there for private roads.
I think that, over time, with my experience, I, I think that we've learned what not to do and what to do with those situations. I too lived on a private, in a private development in the Greenside Vista's area when I first showed up back at home after college. And that was one of the problems that we did have at that time, is the developer had to step in. And he did step up, with a local developer, and he took care of the private roads until such time as our HOA could get on their feet, outside of his original commitment, which was helpful. So I think that could be taken care of in the CCNRs, yes.
Okay, thank you.
So we've been advised not to do that in the past, that we, we can't require that.
It would be, yeah, we would condition it on our CCNRs, or as a part of our...
I specifically asked for it on other projects.
Have you?
And said, we can't do that.
I'm looking at council here now, if I was speaking out of turn.
Well, generally, we don't, well, we don't enforce CCNRs, it's private agreement among the landowners or anything else. How they, I mean, I can see it being tied to the future city acceptance of abandoned private roadways. So as a condition of approval that the developer shall include in their CCNRs, I mean, we already have them. In fact, I think there's a recommendation currently for homeowners association being formed for the ownership and maintenance of the internal private roadway and tract A. I don't remember Mr. Schreiber's previous discussion on that issue, but I think you can include in that condition, if it's amenable to this type of a situation, that they provide for future funding of the roadway to be maintained by the HOA as well, you know, something...
I think it's fantastic. I would love to have it on. Anytime we have a private road, we are facing a nightmare in the future.
Yeah, the reality is the city gets petitioned for these, and we have a new policy. The city has this acceptance of private roadway policy, where the city council looks at these and says, yeah, is this in the best interest of the citizens to accept this private roadway, bring it up to standards, and alleviate this prior HOA's burden that never really took off.
And just to elaborate on that, the private roadway that, the cottage home development and the private roadway have, we're working on that path forward, right? There's a standard in the city. Recently, we had a project approved for cottage homes. We weren't expecting it, but we know the reason for it. We've now since revised our plan set to include sidewalks. Kind of more of an updated private road standard, not an alley. It's a, you know, there's, there's improvements that, that are being made that I think, while there are struggles in the city, I think there's reason to, to make these improvements because everyone in this particular development will actually have to use this road. um, reason to, to make these improvements because everyone in this particular development will actually have to use this road. And, and so I think when you have a stake in it, in this particular cottage home portion of the development, when you have that kind of stake in it, I think you understand the importance and you set forth, uh, association fees and, uh, and you, you have your sinking fund calculations amortized out for twenty years and you, you work it out, so.
And I think my previous concerns are really the enforceability of such a mechanism, Chris, in the future. Is the city gonna get in there and enforce a CCNR that was adopted twenty years ago? It's, it's a difficult task for the city to come in afterwards, many years later and then to say, oh yeah, we, we approved this as a condition twenty-five years ago. How do we enforce that? So, it's probably an enforceability issue.
My concern isn't that, that this project or any project is, isn't meeting code. I think my initial look at it is that it does, but the bigger concern is especially when we're talking about affordable housing. So we have people that stretch to get into the house and not saying it's happened here, but in other subdivisions, the HOA dues are kept artificially low so that people can afford to get in. And then the project's done, developer's gone, guess what? You're now responsible for this landscaping, all this common fencing, roads, sidewalks, all kinds of stuff that's private and now is the association responsibility and those dues quadruple. And all of a sudden you've got all these individual homeowners screaming and class action lawsuits and all this stuff that happens. Not saying it's city's responsibility, I'm just thinking we should be aware of it and plan for it. I, I not saying this project is even in that situation.
I, I live in a development, it's R1 zoned. We have a very small open space. My HOA fees have doubled.
Exactly.
And my question to my association is often, what am I paying for? You know, it's city maintained property essentially in various areas. Uh, that's my question, right? Maintenance costs have gone up, you know, every, all the costs have gone up because the cost of living has gone up here significantly. So I think, uh, as Mr. Kimmel mentioned, providing that sinking fund, which is not regularly a part of developments here, but more so a part of developments in other jurisdictions that we work in, I think would help us understand and maybe as part of the CCNRs and a reiteration at the time of purchase, because these are purchased homes.
Right.
Um, and I think, uh, understanding that at the time of purchase, sitting at the title company trying to sign two hundred cheats to, to buy a home is is daunting, but when you're hit with that two or three times and you understand that, I think that could be a part of the conditions of the purchase that you understand this.
Yeah.
Well, it may be new to some things in post falls, it's, it's not a new concept. I mean,
No.
I've done it in many jurisdictions and the, the goal is to set it up for success.
Correct.
Now, most homeowner associates, we all know that most homeowner associations are not usually run by people who are development or savvy to those kinds of things. So if you set them up for success, at least give them a fighting shot
Correct.
Of staying solvent, because, I mean, the reality is once the fees get too high, people stop paying them and then it just gets snowballs and gets worse.
Correct.
So, thank you for being accepting of that.
Yep.
Any other questions for the applicant? Ready? Thank you.
Thank you.
Public testimony?
All right, not wishing to speak in opposition, Tara Wolf. Uh, we live on the corner of Seringa and Horse Haven. Uh, we have been aware that the field surrounding our home was going to be developed for years. However, we are concerned with the number of homes now proposed. Seringa is twenty-five miles per hour. Horse Haven is also twenty-five mile. Very, fairly rural area compared to others. One hundred plus homes would increase traffic in this area beyond what our infrastructure supports. We would support less houses, reasonable additions, no cottage lots or tiny homes, leave as R1, not residential mix, R2 and limit the number of homes. Wishing to speak in opposition, Kersh Lassiter, Lassiter?
Thank you. So, um, hi, my name's Kristy Lassiter. I live at eighteen forty-two East Prairie View Drive, which is an unannexed, uh, property or development just to the east of the proposed phase two plan that, um, Chris was talking about. Uh, it, you know, it's first and foremost my primary goal to maintain or enhance and improve our properties. And I'm concerned about the, uh, medium density cottage homes. A hundred and five homes means to me two hundred plus cars a day driving down Prairie View, a hundred kids playing on their bicycles without uh, finished sidewalks towards the direction of the elementary school that we were talking about in the previous, uh, hearing. So I think it's Prairie View Elementary is just right around the corner. So the developer plans to improve the property along Horse Haven, but it stops at the end of the development and that is the opposite direction of where the elementary school is. Uh, I walk my dogs down that road frequently and the traffic that goes by doesn't adhere to the twenty mile an hour zone or twenty-five mile an hour zone. There's no space for us to walk. So the kids' safety is, um, you know, important and I wonder what the city plans on doing to mitigate the risk for kids. You know, I am pleased to hear that there is a plan in place for green space. Currently there are no parks around, so, you know, in an effort to decrease the hooliganism that comes with children naturally, um, I am pleased that the developer, uh, is considering that, but, um, I would like to consider maybe more green space or park, uh, and maybe less homes. Uh, another huge concern of mine is the infrastructure. We have aerial power and cable that is currently serving all of our homes. So with this development, what will be the plan for that infrastructure? Am I, as a homeowner, going to be required to now change our power outlet uh, in order to accommodate their development? That's, uh, pretty important for me. The other thing I'd really like to ensure is what the plan in place will be for drainage into our yards. We back up to the east side of their development and I understand that's phase two and its future, but, uh, you know, I drive by developments all the time and I see berms going down into fencing and we are all on individual septics. We don't have access to sewer because we are unaccessed, are, uh, unannexed and it's too much money for our development to access those sewers, so we are stuck on septics. And so if their drainage comes and fills our backyards with ponds, that's problematic. And so if this doesn't happen for ten years, what is our plan or our course of action to be able to get the support we need to fix the drainage problem that isn't working? I really wanna just reiterate those questions. I'd also like to know the price point of the homes. Our goal is to improve our property and bringing these cottage homes in that are low income, that are affordable with unobtainable HOA fees will just, and quality of the product, is that going to promote uh, an improvement in our area? So I am over. I appreciate you listening to me uh, and I think, appreciate your consideration of maybe a modification of the number of homes and a plan for the sidewalks, et cetera.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wishing to speak in opposition, Terry Switzer? Did Terry leave? All right, in that case, I will read. Uh, in opposition, there's no need for this. There are four similar. I think this was for the last one, cause this says fuel stations. I didn't grab the other one, did I? Nope.
I recognize the name from the last one.
Yeah. It's got the right file name on it. Yeah, this talks about the pipeline and schools. Over there. Wishing to speak neutral, Tyler Wolf.
Thank you for your time. Thank you, Mr. MacArthur, for explaining and for the, uh, all the pictures shown. My wife and I are actually the owners of Bugs's Old House. We bought that from John and Deb seven years ago, back in two thousand seventeen. John has been extremely forthcoming and honest with the development and informed us at each process of the way, even though there's been some months here and there. The first conceptual plan that we saw two years ago was significantly less homes, but there were cottage lots in there. Now I've seen it on film and like John said, this isn't about making money, it's about a legacy. There's gonna be walkways, there's gonna be areas. Couple of concerns I got is like when you guys were talking about the HOA fees in the roads, we're not gonna be a part of this HOA. And years ago, me and John and my wife had to come down here because we built a shop on the property where the swimming pool used to be, but we were told by the city that we couldn't build this big of a shop uh, because we went over the eighty-four percent threshold unless you gave the frontage right improvements. We're not developing the field, Mr. Givens is. So we came down, sat down with the city and we had to, we were forced to basically build a smaller shop. And we were also told that we were both going to lose our driveways. Now in the plan, I see that his driveway is gonna be turned into an alley, but we are being forced to possibly lose our driveway. We're not paying HOA fees, but we're being forced to use private roads. Our address used to be Seringa, what's it gonna be now? Who pays for the mailbox? Who does this? Um, we're on, we, we are annexed, we're already in the city. Um, John actually came over a few months ago and talked to us about, you know, the city might even want, be easier if we just rezone everything and bring our parcel into it. Would I prefer R1 over R2? Yes. If we stay with what the conceptual plan is of affordable living house cottage lots, only two story, you gotta play nice and you gotta work together. I grew up in southern Idaho in the fastest growing county, near the fastest growing city. And I live in the second fastest growing ci- city and the second fastest growing county. Growth's coming. So we all kinda gotta work together, but if it's gonna be that many lots, minimum of two people per household, that's two hundred cars, then you had a couple of high school kids in there. One of the other concerns I had and the first thing that I read in here really stuck out was small scale neighborhood commercial office uses may be suitable within residential mixed zones. So does that mean we're gonna build a Starbucks in that neighborhood as well? Does that mean it's gonna be a convenience store with a sandwich shop without the gas pumps? Bringing more people onto private roads that the HOA has to pay for? So there's a lot of questions as far as where we fit into this development, maybe we can talk with Mr. MacArthur later this evening or something, but we're kind of in our own little island on a corner. I will say this, it is gonna be great to have sidewalks. Um, we have kids that ride through, and I tell them, you can ride through our yard all you want, cause the intersections are getting busier, the high schools getting more kids. They're using, um, Horse Haven, you know, to get down to Greens Ferry real quick. They are only twenty-five mile an hour roads. The nice thing is we have police officers that live locally and they keep an eye on the place. But it's coming and you're just gonna add more to the plate when you but a development like this in here. So those are my concerns as it is. You're not gonna make everybody happy. But I appreciate you guys' late night and your time and listening to everybody, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Wishing to speak neutral, Angie Homan.
Okay, so I just want, I just have actually one question as far as like, okay, so if I understand this correctly, that we're not building like any apartments, duplexes or multiplexes there, correct, in that area?
That's right, I understand.
Okay. And then, so, and I have very much a lot of same concerns as you do with our property backs up right there and so about the drainage, yep, I wholeheartedly have a big, huge concern about that, just if, if there's something implemented in there or making sure that they have that. Uh, because I know that that was an issue on the Prairie and, uh, Prairie and Volcan Street, that whole area, cause that's where my son had owned his, was that their drainage was not done correctly. And, uh, so I would like to see less homes there as well and, uh, and then as far as the, uh, if they have like any type of a, something implemented for like fence, for our fence line, like right now it's just the electric fence, just a fence. If they're planning on putting up like a property thing. And then the other part that I, the other question that I have is, I know on Poline, or not Poline, Greens Ferry and Sixteenth, I think it is, the property that got sold over there, the place that was, that's still existing right there that had all that property, they put like a fence right there, but they also put a gate that goes right into their yard that they can't do anything about. And I just wanna make sure that there's not gonna be something done like that. The Cleaves owned that one. They used to anyways, and then they sold it and whoever bought it, like when they sold off the rest of it. There's like some type of a gate that's right there and it ends up going in right in their lawn. So, but, so that's what I wanna know. It's just like, is there, what's the fence line gonna be like as far as that goes? And, cause I couldn't tell on the picture where, what type of housing they were planning on putting behind ours, and I think ours is in second phase. So, uh, what that was, but yes, I very much wanna echo the concerns here because mine is on the same exact thing as yours, where it's just back to back with that property. So, did any of that make sense at all?
Yeah, and I'm sure Mr. MacArthur can address a lot of it.
And I do appreciate the fact that the developer, um, wants to keep them single, single family homes or, as far as like just homeownerships and not apartments and not duplexes, et cetera, so.
Thank you. All right, write the applicant up.
Hi, good evening again, Scott MacArthur. Uh, just wanted to address a couple of items. Christine? Uh, Christine Lassiter, she mentioned that, uh, traffic, right? So part of the issues that we're having in this area right now are the, the fact that we don't have the rights of way uh, to improve the roads to city standards. Uh, this project will improve the development, uh, to city standards, but one of the issues we have is that the property to the east, the section that is primarily concerned, there's a section on, and I don't know if I made my picture large enough, um, there's a large section that cannot see here, sorry, that is not in the city uh, and the rights of way are not wide enough to continue the improvements uh, through that section of Horse Haven to connect to Greens Ferry. Um, so there's some issues over there. The improvements are made up to the west side, or excuse me, the east side of the R1 property that's adjacent to Greens Ferry. Uh, but there will be this gap until the rights of way are, are obtained or the property to the north is developed and the rights of way are uh, attained in the, the center line of the alignment, basically for Horse Haven will have to change to provide that street section that's needed to provide that connectivity. So, um, right now, I, again, I live in the area, um, and I too utilize Horse Haven for access, pedestrian access, walk my kids, walk my dogs. And, uh, we do walk on the streets until we get to the improved sections. So part of that safety improvement will be our improvements as much as we can do uh, through our portions of the property, which is pretty significant, being the, I believe it's around two thousand linear feet of frontage improvements that need to take place. Annexation, and I just ran some quick numbers, uh, Mr. Wilhelm, uh, regarding uh, you know, R1 developed, it'd be roughly about a hundred lots that you could put into this property. Uh, single family residential sixty-five hundred square foot lots, uh, which would be pretty significant. Uh, we're asking for five more, but we're giving you seventy thousand square feet of open space, maintained open space. Price points, right now we have several cottage developments in the city, and the price points are consistent with single-family residential homes, which what we're finding with those, we have a laundry, you know, not laundry, we have a long list of people that want to buy cottage homes because they don't wanna maintain those large lots. We know, I wish I lived on a larger lot, I'd maintain it, but there are people that want to live on those smaller lots and have that sense of community and be adjacent to the open space, and that's, those are the people that we're looking for here in this development. Can't say that's who will buy them, but I do, as with all of my neighbors in my R1-zone property, encourage them to maintain their properties, keep price, price points up. Mr. Wolf, I've never thanked him, he caught my dogs when we first moved into the neighborhood years ago, thank you. My kids were really mad at me for opening the garage door, so. Mr. Wolf, your driveway will continue to access Sarinca. And Mr. Paulus, I believe we discussed that. Mr. Givens, who currently lives on the R1-zone property, he and Mr. Wolf will continue to have access directly to Sarinca. You will not have access to Horse Haven, but you'll have access to Sarinca. And that's to keep, like you mentioned, not a part of the association, not impacting the private road section, and, and we also did provide a buffer in that area as well. So it's, it's a small sliver, a small maintained sliver, and I don't know if we can get it up there, but there is a buffer between the homes, so it's a larger setback to the cottage homes in that area as compared to those that are, you know, we're not building right up to the property line. The homes that'll be built up to your southern boundary are R1-sized lots, larger lots, and I think you can see, you know, 7,000, 7,300 square foot lots there. Those roads, those lots will have access to the private road, but you will contain, continue to have your access through your existing driveway. As stated earlier, we have no intention for any commercial use on this property, and if so, if that use changes, we'll have to come back to the city and ask for a change with this request. Regarding drainage, that's one thing I did not mention. So previously, there's a find it here, a grading plan. This property's flat, we live on the Prairie, it's very flat, and so with all developments in the city, part of our process is to illustrate that drainage is maintained on the property, whether that's public road improvements, private improvements, the drainage must be maintained on our property, on our project, and we have to illustrate that at the time of development. So when the subdivision plans are formally submitted, stamped, as an engineer, we're stamping and saying, yes, we're maintaining our drainage on our property. With this project and with all projects in the city, there's no fencing requirements. We could put up no fence, there could be a block wall, there could be a fence, but that fence isn't a requirement of the subdivision or the development. Density, I know a lot of people hit on that number of homes, again, 100 homes in the R1 zone, or we're asking for 105, eight units per acre in this development. I think it's a fairly great trade-off, and so we're maintaining that eight units per acre in this development, and I will stand for any additional questions.
Questions?
Just looking at that plan right there, am I reading this right, that it almost looks like the drainage is going to the west? Just the natural drainage would be headed west?
That's correct, and just, this is a conceptual grading plan illustrating how we see the subdivision potentially being laid out, but at all times, that is the intent with development. There's, there's certain circumstances where you do have to grade backyards to accommodate that, but it's, in this particular, you are very correct, so thank you.
Well, that, that is a good issue that Christie and Angie brought up, because over there on Prada, I know some people over there that they can't get rid of their water. So, I don't know what we can say about it, that's engineer stuff.
You didn't point at me, you pointed somewhere else. I'm just kidding. I just wanted to make sure.
He tells me he is. But anyway, that's, that is a big issue that what they brought up, because, you know, standing water is no good.
Correct, right. And we do live on soils that are, have high infiltration rates in our area, and so we even slow them down with our stormwater swales by the introduction of organic topsoil. The problem is when that topsoil is compacted or the materials are over-compacted and need to be scarified. And so that's a lot of times what it is, is just getting to a depth of, scarifying it to a depth that allows that infiltration.
Yes, sir.
So I did some math, and the number of lots you have divided by the acreage is 5.83 dwelling units per acre?
Yeah, I believe, I was looking back through my notes, for some reason, the math, we'll be under eight units per acre.
And so I, yeah, I busted out the calculator for a second, so 6.0 is fine on the
I'd like to keep it at under eight, but I don't, I don't foresee us getting, I checked that after as well, I was trying to maintain it at eight, just in the event that Mr. Givens' home does turn into another unit there as well. I don't, again, this is conceptual subdivision plan, we're looking at a max density, I don't wanna try to limit that density, I wanna be consistent with the comp plan.
That makes sense.
Thank you, but thank you, yes, I, after I sat down, I looked at that as well. Thank you. Mr. Wilhelm, he's an engineer.
Who is? I don't understand most of what he says.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Was that the hearing?
All right, commissioners, because we have a couple different ways of approaching it, we have a subdivision and we have the annexation, zoning request and a zone change, the subdivision approval would be conditioned on the zone changes for the two properties, the zone change and the zoning recommendation of council. So, why don't we go through the annexation and zone change criteria first? Take both lots at once, since they are presented in the same way, there's no difference in the manner, you're not gonna, it's unlikely you're gonna zone one not the same as the other, so that'd be my recommendation. Before you tonight is a requested zone of residential mixed for annexation 25-2 and zone change 25-1, and we'll go through the criteria. Number one, is the proposed zoning district consistent with the future land use map and focus area contained in the currently adopted Post Falls Comprehensive Plan?
But I'll speak at once. So, let's see here, I forget the actual comp plan designation for this, is it transitional or is it?
I think it's a low-density residential.
Okay, so low-density residential and RM, residential mixed zone, is an implementing zone for that designation, understanding that there is a density cap in the comprehensive plan for low-density residential of eight dwelling units per acre.
So if it, if it is zoned RM, is there a cap?
We can, so RM comes with a development agreement, a zoning development agreement attached to it, where that's, those are the things that we add into, or can add into those development agreements.
In our recommendation?
Recommend, or that, that recommendation, which would be things like eight dwelling units per acre cap, no multifamily, no commercial, or, and single-family detached housing, or something like that.
Okay.
Unlimited to single-family detached.
We have a focus area here of central, the central focus area, I don't know if there was any discussion or anyone wanted to address any of the points on that one?
That talk, that speaks to infill development, it's a central, or the central island, right? Central island, and which speaks to infill development being a priority for the city and infill annexations, and to be honest, this is really a good example of how those old 1970s, 60s, 70s subdivisions, whether, you know, the half-acre lots on the adjoining property, this is a good, is an example of why those may never come into the city, because they just, they won't probably annex, but when these, when these properties do come up for sale and when they do come to develop, it's good to get them into the city so that stuff like that doesn't happen and they never redevelop. If they develop in the county or something, it's really hard to get them into the city later. So, and that goes to expanding infrastructure, right? Because that adjoining subdivision, there's no right-of-way and there's no funding mechanism to build the sidewalks across that. And so, even though it's essentially gonna be eventually, it's surrounded by urban area, but the funding mechanisms for having pedestrian connectivity across there are few and far in between.
Thank you. Number two, and this ties into the, your comments tie into the goals and policies, consistency with the Post Falls Comprehensive Plan, so speaking a little bit more on that one, we talked about a little bit of transportation and the infrastructure improvements are always a big one.
Goal six, transportation improvements, especially on that corner, even though it's off-site, it's, that's a really big one, getting that intersection of Horse Haven and Sarinca built out, pedestrian connectivity policies 67 speaks to that.
Policies eight and nine, talk about the infill and the annexation of the county pockets in there, but then that kinda just ties in to the frontage improvements, the connectivity of the infrastructure.
Provide
Kind of already talked about, yeah.
Okay. And number three, on the zoning recommendation and zone change criteria, does the proposed district, being RM, create a demonstrable adverse impact upon the delivery of services by any political subdivision providing service in the city?
Nothing's been identified in the staff report.
Nope.
And I don't believe there's any other testimony on the adverse impacts on those services, so. Those deliberations are done. Would you prefer to move on to the subdivision criteria and then address everything at the same time, or do you wanna deliberate on the annexation and zoning recommendation?
Let's do the zoning, let's do this one.
Yeah, let's just take care of this one now.
Yeah, I'll, I'll fire up a motion here really quick.
Something written down already, probably.
Not really, but I have a sample motion that I can use. So, I move to recommend approval of filed the G2 Development Annexation and Zone Change, file numbers ANNX 25-2 and ZC 25-1, finding that the requesting zone of RM meets the approval criteria in Post Falls municipal code 18.20.100 as outlined in our deliberations, and direct staff to prepare a zoning recommendation to be provided to city council, and a recommendation to include a cap on the dwelling units per, or on the density to eight dwelling units per acre, and for there to be no commercial or multifamily development included in that zoning development agreement.
And the motion?
What about improvements along Horse Haven that are not the frontage of this property?
I think that's already included in the prior annexation agreement, so that goes with the land.
Okay.
I think that's correct.
And I would make a, I would second your existing motion.
All right, I have a motion and a second, roll call please.
Carrie?
Yes.
Kimball?
Yes.
Stephenson?
Yes.
Wilhelm?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries, thank you. Secondly, the subdivision application for subdivision 25-2, 18.02 acres combined in the residential mixed zone, this motion and/or approval would be contingent upon the rezone and zoning, I'm sorry, annexation approval on council into 105 residential lots. Number one, water system that is adequate. Unless there's a debate on that one, Ross Point Water District has done a will-serv letter.
Yeah, agreed.
Seeing a nod. Number two, adequate provisions have been made for public sewage system that can accommodate these sewage flows, and again, the city of Post Falls has indicated service would be available.
Yep, sewers available, and they have a plan for it within their subdivision.
Number three, proposed streets are consistent with the transportation element of the comprehensive plan.
Yeah, they're, they're widening Sarinca and Horse Haven in conformance with the Transportation Master Plan, and they're, not only that, but they're also providing connectivity to adjoining properties as best they can to the south to provide for good connectivity and future road networks.
And on the proposed streets, you had suggested that including a condition for the future private roadway to be sinking fund in the HOA also addresses the consistency and the impact on those future city services, or if they were to try to un-privatize those streets in the future.
Correct.
I'm just pointing that out, see if I'm getting a nod there.
Yeah, I think the goal is to, hopefully they won't have to, that they're as, you know, solvent, but that's the goal, to set them up for success, right?
Yes, sir.
Not just kick the can.
On that note, I would say it's, it's not just the private streets, it's any common area.
It really is, I mean, if I'm not mistaken, the field zone HOA struggles with maintaining and funding their, their open acres and acres of, or at least in the past they did.
It's getting better.
And that's, you know, that's a 900 and some units, so. Yeah.
Okay, number four, all areas the proposed subdivision involving soil or topographical conditions presenting hazards have been identified.
There were none identified?
Yep. Well, the one concern about drainage, I would consider that a topographic concern, but that's been addressed and will be addressed
Right.
Through the grading.
The developers aware, yep.
Number five, the area proposed for the subdivision is zoned or will be zoned for the proposed use, and the use conforms to other requirements found in the code.
I think the big thing that comes up for me on this particular one is if it was an R1 zone, which is our lowest-density, single-family residential zone, I think it's our lowest density in the city, and that's what our comprehensive plan leans towards, the difference in the unit count for this particular project is nominal overall. So I don't see this being a stretch.
Yeah, and there's certain benefits to going with RM.
It gets us more of the variety in housing, more price points, and I don't think that's a bad thing.
Agreed.
Yeah, I think it's
Okay, thank you. And finally, number six, adequate plans to ensure the community will bear no more than its fair share of costs by paying fees or otherwise.
Impact fees and street improvements.
It's kind of interesting if you really look at the construction cost on a project like this, that, and we always talk about density, higher density somehow equals affordable, it's not necessarily true, especially when you take a look at impact fees and all these, all the off-site costs, road improvements and so forth and so on, that adds up to more than the land. So this development is, and most developments we have coming into the city are actually paying way more than their share, or at least mitigating their share of any of these costs.
I mean, the reality is that, especially corner lots and corner developments where there's two frontages, there, the city gets a lot of bang for the buck when it comes to those, and when I mean the city, I mean the public. Because it's, it's really the future, it's planning for the future, and as you see them slowly chew away at these infill developments, the infrastructure happens and, you know, standards change, and there's little jogs here and there in the sidewalk and the curb and whatnot, but the reality is that at the end of the day, there's a, there's a huge benefit to the city transportation network, and really, the regional transportation network that comes with these annexations and these subdivisions, building the frontage improvements.
All righty.
All right, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion.
I would. There we go. And John, you had a condition of approval modification for number four, I believe it was, that we spoke about?
Yeah, it alluded to the fact that you would have, prior to Phase Three, completed the open space, and the frontage improvements would either be completed or bonded for.
Okay.
But the way it reads now is the proposed subdivision must be completed in two phases.
Right, so it's.
So we would modify that condition, so, okay, my motion will modify that condition to what you just said. Because I'm not going to repeat it. But it's on the record.
No more than three phases?
Yeah, no more than three phases, and.
All common area improvements to be done before three, Phase Three?
Fa, uh, prior to the, yeah, prior to the completion of Phase Three, or prior to.
Commencing.
Commencing Phase Three, and all frontage improvements shall be either constructed or bonded for prior to Phase Three.
Did you just say open space?
Frontage improvements.
Yeah, we'd want the open space completed too.
I said completed, and that, that to be completed, the frontage improvements to be either completed or bonded.
Okay, cool, thanks, sorry.
Okay, so I move to approve the G2 subdivision, finding that it meets approval criteria in Post Falls Municipal Code 17.12.060H as outlined in our deliberations, subjects to conditions one through 14, with number four as modified previously stated, adding a condition of approval, requiring the developer to put into the CCRs a mechanism for a sinking fund to provide for the eventual resurfacing and maintenance of the private road infrastructure, ensuring that there is adequate funding mechanisms in place for future maintenance, and direct staff to prepare a written reasoned decision to that effect.
Could you change that wording on your last one to say something along the lines of CCRs to include a funding mechanism for maintenance and capital replacement of common, common areas, common amenities, common features?
Yes.
So it's not just the private road?
Not just private road, but all of those things, yes. That makes sense, yep.
So noted.
So amended.
And conditioned on annexation approval.
And conditioned upon annexation approval, that was one of them.
Oh, it is.
I thought so.
I can't read anymore.
Based on that, I would second that motion.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
It is one?
Nope, you're right, it was not one, so, thank you.
No, I think it's number one.
I thought it was number one.
Yeah, it is, all right, there it is, yeah, that's number one, all right.
It's getting late, but it's not that late.
Adding number one again.
Motion on the floor.
Second.
And we have a second, roll call, please.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Wilhelm?
Yes.
Stephenson?
Yes.
Kimball?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Motion carries. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, administrative or staff reports?
Um, there's none.
Are you sure?
Commissioner comments?
How did Post Falls days go in terms of soliciting feedback for comprehensive plan?
Um, Post Falls days, actually, I thought it went pretty good, we had a pretty good interaction, both Friday evening and Saturday, it stayed pretty busy.
Good.
You know, we had, you know, about, I think, 378 people do, trying to get, the penny poll.
Oh, cool.
And then we had, I think, close, I mean, a pretty good showing on the mini-poll, and then we were able to get a word out on the, we have a 30-question survey, that's currently we're taking out till August 11th, so, we, I, we was able to get some cards out for that, we have about, I think, 150-ish, I believe, responses in that, plus or minus a little bit. Then in addition to that, I did go to the market on the last two Wednesdays on those musics, still handing out little coasters for giving people information to fill out the surveys, so hopefully we'll get that info, but so far, it seems like it's going pretty good, we're getting a pretty good idea of stuff. And then on our website, we actually gave, if you go to the comp plan, there's a brief overview of the results of both the penny poll and the mini-poll, so you could go review that if you want to.
Excellent.
Thank you. Very cool. Any other comments?
It's nice to be on the side of the podium now.
All right, next motion is adjournment, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Adjourned.